My name is Fred Cook and I drive school bus.
My name is LeAnn Murchy and I'm a school bus driver for TCAPS. It's been a very wonderful experience.
When I first hired in, one of the previous bus drivers told me that this particular job, driving a school bus, is the best job on earth. So I immediately took to it. And I have to agree that this is one of the best jobs that anyone can do.
What prompted me in the very beginning, I have a college degree. And she said, "You're in the safest vehicle in the world on the road." So I thought, "Well, you know, I'm gonna try." Because I would be on the same time schedule as my own children. And when they were off, I was off. When holidays, I was, you know, I was there. So it was the best of both worlds. TCAPS offers jobs elsewhere within the system.
Between routes, I used to, for 12, 13 years, I did lunch duty over at East Middle School. And now I paint.
They're real good about finding people the hours that they need during the course of the day to make the job great. We have Mesa Insurance, the whole district has it. It's awesome. It's the best health insurance. We offer a 401K. There's a sign on bonus. It's a win-win situation.
The most important thing, I think, coming to work at TCAPS is you understand that you are part of a team. It's a part of a collective, you know, it's not just bus drivers and then versus teachers. It's not that. We all are in this thing called education together.
If a person likes kids, generally likes kids, this is a perfect job.
I'm talking to kids all day. And that experience is really heartwarming. And I continue to understand what it means to be a part of the community.
You are an educator. You have a chance to touch children's lives every day. And don't think that you don't. You are such an important part of the wheel of education.
A quorum presence. I call this meeting of the Board of Education to order. The board would like to welcome the audience and thanks you for attending. And viewers may watch Board of Education meetings and Board Committee meetings live on TV 190 or online at tcaps.net/bboard. Recorded meetings may be viewed on demand at the same address. Please rise and join Ms. Trillet's kindergarten class from Westwood Elementary in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Dang technology.
Shall we just go in?
Go ahead and start.
Go ahead.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and hopefully we'll have that at the next meeting, so we will still have that. We are now at the review/approval portion of the agenda. Is there any changes to the agenda?
I would like to amend the agenda and add a discussion item on cellphone social media policy at the end.
Okay.
A second.
There's a motion to add a discussion on cellphone policy. Is there any questions, I guess, just for clarity? We're looking to just have a general beginning conversation on that?
Yes.
Okay. Any questions at all from any board members?
Where will that go?
I would put that as the last discussion item, so that would go...
I think it's number, or letter H.
Amen, Corus.
Yes, H. Okay. We will have to have a vote to amend the agenda, so Megan, please conduct a roll call vote.
Trustee Pack?
Yes.
Trustee Ballinger?
Yes.
Trustee Byrd?
Yes.
Trustee Humphries?
Yes.
Trustee Moonmore?
Yes.
Trustee Newman-Bale?
Yes.
Trustee Raymond?
Yes.
All right, motion carries. That is added to the agenda. Is there any other changes? All right. Hearing none, actually, can I have a motion to approve as amended? I move to approve the agenda as amended.
Second.
All right. I think we do need, let's just do a roll call vote on it, just in case. Since I broke it up, I don't, but...
Trustee Moonmore? Trustee Raymond, apologies. Trustee Moonmore?
Yes.
Trustee Ballinger?
Yes.
Trustee Byrd?
Yes.
Trustee Humphries?
Yes.
Trustee Newman-Bale?
Yes.
Trustee Pack?
Yes.
All right. Motion carries. Apologies, I'm pretty sure we didn't need to, but I want to make sure everything's kept official. Moving on to recognition, deferring to Dr. Van Wagner.
Okay, we have some great recognition for staff tonight. Why don't we, we have really some real neat opportunities to recognize our folks. I'll start with our outstanding persons in education. We had a few board members that were able to be at the presentation. But we have three staff members who have received the Outstanding Person in Education awards. TCAPS award winners include Jill Jenkins, Administrator Lead at Eastern Elementary School. Mike Livingston, good history teacher at West Middle School. And I think with us, Jennifer Taylor, Bus Aid for TCAPS Transportation Department. Okay. And congratulations to Jill, Mike, and Jenny for this well-deserved recognition. We had the, a few nights ago, we had the Northwest Education Services Outstanding Educator Awards. Northwest Education Services, Traverse City Chambers, so Traverse Connect. And TBA Credit Union have announced the 2023 Outstanding Educator Award recipients, which includes four honorees from TCAPS. These recipients receive the honor for making exemplary contributions to the academic success of students' educational collaboration and professional development. They include Holly Decker, Social Worker at Traverse City High School. Is Holly here? Holly, will you stand up? Julie Puckett, Math Teacher at Traverse City Central High School. I see Dan, Dan Rosenberg, Social Studies Teacher at Traverse City West Elementary School. And I have to tell you, you know, there's really not that many of those awards given. So to be able to have that room and filled with TCAPS teachers and support staff was really, really a neat experience and a great thing. So again, appreciate all the work you guys do. Well-deserved. And just can't say how thankful enough we are for your service. So one more round of applause. We also have the Michigan School Band and Orchestra Association, MSBOA, Teacher of the Year 2023 for District Two. Congratulations to Traverse City West Band Director Chad Meelands. This honor is determined to be a nomination-style application and is voted on as a district in the spring. So you might remember a year ago Eric Wongeman was the Michigan Vocal Teacher of the Year. So how awesome it is for the, all the staff that we have just shows the caliber and quality of all of our programs and our teachers here in TCAPS. So just want to take the time to make sure to recognize them and just thank them for all the service that they've given. But we also have the International Society of Technology in Education, ISTI. And this is a big one, 20 to Watch. So the International Society of Technology in Education announced the winners of the 2023 ISTI 20 to a Watch Award, which recognizes 20 up-and-coming individuals across the nation who exemplified excellence through projects or artifacts that others can replicate. So congratulations to TCAP Educational Technology Coach Daniel Brostrom on being named one of the 20. So that's really a big honor, to be 20 in the nation of educational technology identified. So really proud, and again, proud of all of them. And just thankful that we have the opportunity to work and have them work with our kids. And so just wanted to take the time again to appreciate them and to be able to have that opportunity. So, and all of you that are here, if you might come up, so we can get a picture with you guys, would be great.
Thank you, everyone. Definitely some, a good number of awards this year, for sure. Moving on to the next agenda item is a public hearing on sex ed. So as President of the Board, I declare this public hearing open to the public. The additions and revisions of the sex education curriculum will be the subject of this hearing. Deferring to Dr. Van Wagner.
Okay. So we have had a presentation on this in our Curriculum Committee. And so again, required by state law, we have to have two public hearings that have to be within a full board agenda. And so this is our opportunity to have the first of those public hearings, even though we have had the presentation for the committee to be able to see and then forward on to the full board. So this is an opportunity to hear that. So Dan McGee is with us. He is our Coordinator for Sex Education. We are required by law to have a committee that meets at least, I believe, twice a year. And yet ours has met more. And I always commend Dan for the work he does and that entire team to just be spot on to the law and making sure that everything is in line with that. And so he's able to come and he does an update with the board on all of the updates to that curriculum that that committee has reviewed. Again, it's the same presentation that the Curriculum Committee saw. But we will do that, and he will do those. And then at that point, it would be proper to open it up for comments from the public as required by law. So at this point, hand it over to Dan.
All right, thank you. All right, so our first, our first part of the presentation is just a review of some of the law. So we just wanted to make sure everyone was educated. I'm not going to read every slide. We would be here till midnight with all the other things on the agenda. But there's a number of things in the law. This is just a great way for public to see and the board members also to see what we have to follow and we do to the letter. So these are some of the things, our meetings, we met for the board curriculum. Today's our first public meeting. And then our next one, we hope to have adoption. So we have, we have a few things. This is, that we're asking you to look at. And we have to review our bylaws. In our bylaws, we have to review our bylaws. So we use the guidelines from the state, we use our past bylaws. And then the committee goes through the wording and deciding what makes more sense for us to proceed forward. So the first thing we're looking at is our proposed bylaws. So we have a goal. And then what is the committee in this, in its sex ed advisory board? And what's our role? What do they do? So we establish program goals and objectives. We review and recommend materials and methods. We're gonna have some materials that we're gonna ask to be reviewed as well today. And then having, every two years, evaluating and whatnot. So we measure, try to get a measurement of how effective we are. We actually formed a subcommittee. So next year, we will, we will bring forward how we're doing that for next year. Yep. The bylaws has membership. This kind of breaks down the membership, what it is. They, just real quick, when someone applies and they are selected to be on the committee. And by selected, it is not a selection, really. It is, we have more applicants than we have places, vacancies. So it's a, it's a draw out of the hat. We do have some things we have to follow. We have to have, half the committee has to be parents. And then we're limited on how many parents can actually be public school employees. So that's all taken care of through the draws to make sure we follow those laws as well. Once on the committee, they have a three-year term. It rotates every year. There are people coming off and more applicants. We will, we will post applicant, for applicants in August, early September. So they can, whoever's selected can attend our first meeting in October. If a member is unable to attend any meetings during the year, and we had five this year, then they lose their seat, but they can reapply if they choose. But we, the commitment of most people is to be at all meetings. And then here's a little bit more about our membership. And we have co-chairs and the sex ed supervisor, which is, that's myself. So those would be our bylaws. And they continue with some expectations. And then here's a little bit about, in our bylaws, that we have to have at least two meetings per year. We get written notice of the meetings, we have agendas, we have minutes. And then the bylaws will be reviewed every three years, so this was our year to do it. All right. Another thing we have to do in our bylaws is have co-chairs. And we had a lot of discussion in the sex ed advisory board. Because this year, next year, we would, we would need two, we would need two new co-chairs. So we changed the language so they could be approved at this time. Katie Kubisch and Ian McGurn. Katie will be in her third year on the committee, Ian will be in his second. Ian is a parent in TCAPS. So he fits that, that role as we have a TCAPS parent. And what we asked, what we're asking in our bylaws is that instead of having two co-chairs that would serve simultaneously for two years, we would have one and, and then the next one, the next one. So Katie actually volunteered, being she had one more year after she was nominated. She goes, "I'll serve one year and then that'll get us on that rotation." So one of the co-chairs will always be in place. That'll give us, you know, a little more consistency as well. Another thing we're asking is, this would be fertility awareness. So we had brought forward last year contraception, and that was approved. And we use it in our classes at the high school. So the fertility awareness was something we didn't have worked out a year ago. So we'd like to add these slides to the beginning of the contraception. So... So this is making them aware that this is a way that you can track your menstrual cycle to prevent pregnancy. We want the students to understand that at this stage in their life, they're very inconsistent. And then with our students that we have on our sex ed advisory board, they let us know that most students actually track their menstrual cycles on an app. And there's various apps. We're not recommending any, but that's, that's the real world of what they are doing. So this gives us some more information on this and the effectiveness. The next, the next one we're asking is our sex in the law. We've made a few changes to it and updates, and so we're asking for this one to be approved as well. Some of the changes are graphics. Sometimes there's some language changes. Consent is something that we legally have to teach, and we've been doing that for many years. This slide doesn't have a gold star on it, which means it's one that's already been approved. I put gold stars on the ones that we, we had actual changes. Coercion's another interesting thing, because I always ask the kids what it is, and they don't have a clue. So this is a great teaching point about the persuasion, which is, coercion is actually used in the law. So... And these ones aren't changed. And a lot of these, this language is right out of the state law. The only change on this one, I believe, was the catfishing that we added to this. And this one, we added the buddy system. And that is information we already had. Questions?
Any? All right. No, I don't think we do.
Well, go ahead, Holly.
I was gonna say, I found a typo.
Okay.
On the third page, starred page under sex in the law, can not, should be cannot.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
That's a quick, that's a quick pick.
And also, Dan, if somebody wants to review all those materials, they can contact you for that?
I, I've got the, I can send them this, the proposed, and I can send them what is the current curriculum. I mean, takes me minutes.
All right, no other questions? Thank you. At this time, the board would like to invite comments from the public. Is there anyone that would like to provide public input? All right. Yep.
Scott Richards, Interlaken. Sex education belongs to the parents and God. It doesn't belong to the school. It doesn't belong to the state law. The law is the word of God. You can see over the last, what, since the sixties, what's happened to our society. It's plain as day. The government and the school does not need to be involved in sex education. That's all I got to say on that. Do I talk for three minutes?
This is just, just for sex ed. So there is, you can still speak at the regular public comment after this.
All right. Well, sex belongs to God and the parents.
So yeah, just to clarify, this public comment is just about the sexual education item. It does not prohibit you from speaking in any other area of public comment.
Okay. Um, where are we going? I'm sorry. Anything? Okay. Bill Wiesner, Traverse City. One I'd like to look at first, I hope you got both of the handouts. And this one right here, it's table 34 from Alfred Kinsey's work. It was on Donahue Show. You can see a one-minute YouTube on this. Examples of multiple orgasm in pre-adolescent males. This is the foundation of comprehensive sex ed. It came from Kinsey's false studies here. This is the sexual molestation, molestation of children. If you look at this chart, the arrows go to a four-year-old. They helped him have 26 orgasms in a 24-hour period. How much sleep did he get there? Another four-year-old, 17 in 10 hours. Another four-year-old, six orgasms in five minutes. Start from the bottom, a five-month-old, three orgasms. 11-month-old, 10 orgasms in an hour. 11-month-old, 14 orgasms, 38 minutes. That's the foundation of Kinsey. Kinsey, 87% of the people that he interviewed, interviewed were sex addicts, homosexuals, criminals, rapists, prostitutes, pedophiles, and prisoners. And they said that he had a general look at the population. It was false. And that's what this comprehensive sex ed is, is based on. This article, mindpolluters.com. Mind, The Mind Polluters is a great documentary exposes schools sexualizing kids. Recommend you go there, watch the trailer. It's a new documentary and Texas parents are shocked at what's being taught to their kids in schools. The film documents the origin, origins of the damaging effects of graphic comprehensive sex ed and the brain rewiring of social emotional learning. Comprehensive sex ed, kids are used, taught, used to be taught about biology and birth control. Now anything goes, according to Audrey Warner. This lady's been to Africa, teaching in Uganda, in Texas. In Texas, they were just successful in using this information, 300 at the Republican Convention, 300 precinct delegates. And they got to the legislature and they passed it so that they would not have this pornography in the libraries. Nobody needs that, as was stated here. Matthew18.org is a great organization too, and I'll be giving these away to anybody who wants them. Old Earth or millions of global flood. Thank you.
All right. Is there any other public comment? Hearing no comments, I declare this public hearing closed. The board thanks you for your comments. And the second public hearing will be held at the July 10th, 2023 Board of Education meeting in this room. Moving on to the next item, it's a public hearing on the budget. So as president of the board, I declare this public hearing open. The property tax millage rate proposed to be levied to support the proposed budget will be the subject of this hearing. Deferring to Dr. Van Wagner.
Yeah, so at this point, it is again by law that we have to have this public hearing. So I'll pass over to Assistant Superintendent Christine Thomasell.
So I will refer you to your budget book in tab two. The purpose of the budget hearing is to discuss the taxes levied for the proposed 2324 budget, which we will discuss later as a discussion item. This budget book will be posted online. Tab two includes the estimated ad valorem taxes to be collected for the 2324 fiscal year for our general operating budget. The operating millage rate of 18 mils, that's on non-principal resident exemptions. That is estimated to bring in about $48,940,000. That is an approximation. For the debt millage, for our debt service funds at 3.1 mils, those are collected on homestead, non-principal residences. And the industrial facilities taxes and commercial forest taxes. And that is estimated to bring in about $20,907,000. Those are estimations based on ad valorem taxes. And that will all be presented in detail in tabs four and five later on as a result of our general operating budget, the original proposed budget for 2324.
All right. Is there any board questions? All right. Nope, sorry.
No, thank you.
All right. Hearing no comments. Oh, sorry, actually, at this time, we would like to invite comments from the public. Is there anyone that would like to provide public comments specific to the budget hearing? All right, hearing no comments, I declare this public hearing closed. Moving on to public comment number one, this is the general public comment. Individuals addressing the board shall have one opportunity to speak during this period, either this or the later general public comment, and shall be limited to three minutes. Individuals should not make personal attacks unrelated to actions affecting the school system, and we strongly encourage common courtesy and constructive feedback. Detailed rules and procedures, including a complaint process, are outlined in Board Policy 0167.3.
My name is Jill Hammer and my husband, Brian Hammer, is here with me and he will finish the second half of my statement today. We have three boys aged eight, not 10 and 11. Our boys currently attend Old Mission Peninsula School with our oldest set to attend East Middle School next year. We are here today out of concern that we have for the TCAPS cell phone policy. I attended a board community hour a couple of weeks back with the hope of sharing some of what my husband and I had learned from our research about cell phones, smartphones, the impact on kids and in schools. I was shocked to learn that when I arrived at the, at the Horizon, almost every other person standing in line was there for the exact same purpose, to advocate that TCAPS remove cell phones from our school building. The grassroots dialogue that has transpired over the last couple of weeks has been encouraging. As you will hear tonight, we have folks from all walks of life, both professionally and personally, that are here to advocate for the harms that cell phones are having on the education and well-being of our children. We understand that cell phones are a part of everyday life, but we strongly believe that we are corporately doing a major disservice to our children's education by letting them remain in schools. There's a mountain of evidence that supports that phones are terrible for kids and terrible in a school setting. And I have shared much of that information with you via email. Without rehashing every study, suffice it to say that I have never seen a single study where smart devices are having a positive impact on children and young adults. From the TCAPS compass, the mission of TCAPS is to educate, inspire, and support all learners to maximize individual excellence and success. And from this TCAP strategic plan, section 1B, a goal focus area is to develop and implement structures and systems of support to increase mental and emotional health and social well-being. My husband will come up and finish our statement. Brian Hammer.
Good evening. Good evening. So it, it is our assertion that the mere presence of smartphones in the classroom make it impossible for TCAPS to achieve the outcomes that my wife just outlined as part of the mission statement. And the peer-reviewed research that has been shared with you supports what is the conclusion that we're coming to. Further, I would add as a businessperson in this community, I struggle to understand how this particular school district can join a lawsuit alleging the harmful effects of social media when at the very same time, this school district is currently allowing smartphones and social media within the school building. And what, what, what we're asking for is very simple. Amend the current policy and adopt an away-for-the-day policy at TCAPS. And specifically for the 2023 and 2024 school year. This policy would require that upon entering a school building, all smartphones are powered down and stored in lockers until after the dismissal bell. Many respected school districts have already implemented similar policies across the state and country that remove from phones from the classrooms. Just in Michigan alone, districts such as Bloomfield Hills, East Lansing, Farmington, Forest Hills, Haslett, Utica Public Schools, all very big, well-respected schools, all have implemented similar policies that we're here advocating for tonight. In Traverse City, both GTAX and Greenspire have phone-free policies today. Jill and I have shared the actual wording of those particular policies with all of you via email that you guys can consider and we would recommend for adoption. Thank you for your time.
Sophie Baruth. I apologize if I don't have the last name correct.
Hello, my name is Sophie Baruth and I'm in fifth grade at Eastern Elementary. At first, I was a bit nervous writing this because I thought kids would make fun of me. I think they might be mad at me because they want their phones at school. I'm not trying to attack anyone, but nonetheless, there are people doing things on their phones that I don't want any part of. I don't like talking about this part, however, I have to put aside my insecurities and speak my mind. A lot of kids are addicted to their phones. I have a hard time putting away my devices too. But when I do, I find things that are more enjoyable and worth my time, like writing this speech. I recently went on a fishing field trip where the kids could bring their phones. One student dropped their phone into the pond and for the next several hours, this was the focus of many kids. They waited and dove into the water trying to find it, looking for hours. When the phone was finally retrieved, the biggest cheer went out, louder than any cheer for the biggest fish. During the school day, some kids sneak into their lockers and take their phones to the bathrooms, stare at TikTok. They don't even have fun at recess because they're just crouching in a tower, hiding their faces behind a phone with the kids crowding around them. I worry about kids looking at weird or inappropriate stuff on their phones. When I attend summer camp, it's without phones. I think this is a great opportunity to have fun and play in a way we can't when we have the distraction of our phones. We have many hours after each and every school day when we are plugged in and have our devices. We eat them during school. In closing, I am support of an away-for-the-day policy at TCAPS. Thank you.
Galdes.
Galdes.
Hi. My name is Dr. Stephanie Galdes and I'm a local pediatrician and a proud TCAPS parent to a preschooler, third grader, and sixth grader. Last month, the Surgeon General, Dr. Vivek Murthy, issued a call for urgent action regarding the negative effects of social media use on our youth mental health. In this warning, Dr. Murthy reviews the most up-to-date research and calls for our children, families, community, tech companies, and policymakers to take further action. Adolescence and childhood represent a critical stage in brain development. This is a time period where identities and self-worth are being formed. At these ages, brain development is especially susceptible to social pressures, peer opinions, peer comparison, and it is also a time when risk-taking behaviors are at their peak. Social media can act as a powerful, powerful tool for connection, but the negative influence of social media is determined by the amount of time spent on that platform, the type of content they are exposed to, and the impact it has on the disruption of healthy activities like sleep, physical activity, and in-person social interactions. Extreme, inappropriate, and harmful content continues to be easily accessible to our children. Social media has also been proven to perpetuate body dissatisfaction, disordered eating behaviors, social comparison, and low self-esteem, especially in our adolescent girls. A recent study reported by the Surgeon General showed that 12 to 15-year-olds who spent greater than three hours per day on social media faced double the risks of experiences of poor mental health. face double the risks of experiences of poor mental health and increase in symptoms of anxiety and depression. Evidence has also shown that with proper limits in decreasing time on social media, depression rates and symptoms improve. Our kids get plenty of exposure to screens and social media. We do not need to give them more time while in school, and this is where TCAPs can change the narrative. We are in the middle of a national youth mental health crisis. I treat more kids in my office for anxiety and depression than I have ever done before. I counsel kids daily on screen time, social media, sexting, and cyberbullying. We know if we can get these kids involved in social activities, get them active in unstructured play, connected with a peer or mentor, they do better. Limiting social media and screen time in this vulnerable population helps with all of that. This is our opportunity to make a change as a school district. TCAPs can create a safer and healthier digital environment by limiting further exposures of our children to social media during the school day. Their childhood and development are happening right now, and change needs to occur now. We need to empower our kids. We need to change rules in our own home and change the policy here at TCAPs. I urge you to make this change. Continue to keep our kids safe in a nurturing, social, emotional, and academic environment where they can have their phones and social media away for the day while in school at TCAPs.
Thank you, Dr. Galdes.
Paula Colombo.
Hi, I'm Paula Colombo. I'm a parent of a TCAP student. I'm also a physician in the community, and I practice, my specialty is psychiatry. I was going to say a whole bunch of stuff, but they've taken all the wind out of what I was going to say. So one of the things I really want to focus on are the counterarguments. Why wouldn't you adopt this policy? Why wouldn't you have an away-for-the-day policy? And I think a lot of parents will be saying, "Well, I want to be able to communicate with my kids. Right now, I can text them, I can call them if I need to." But I would like to remind the majority of people in this room, we all went to school when we had no cellphones. Can you imagine coming in when cordless phones came into being, and you had your phone charged up, and you had it with you on your desk all day long, waiting for someone to call you? That would never have happened. Or in the days of corded phone, we'd plug the phone into a wall, and we'd just hold the phone there while we waited for our mom or dad to tell us when they were picking us up. That doesn't need to happen. We have the ability for our students to utilize TCAP's email. They can contact the office if they need to. Now, the other issue that might come up is what happens if there's an emergency in the school? What happens if there's a crisis? What happens if there's... I won't even say it out loud because I don't want to jinx us. Let's just say there's a traumatic event that happens, and parents want to be able to reach their kids, kids want to be able to reach their parents. The problem with that is, unfortunately, our kids are in a sad state of affairs where they have been participating in lockdown drills probably since elementary school for many of them that are now in high school. And in no part of those lockdown drills do you reach out for your phone and call your parent. You should be paying attention to what you're supposed to be doing in the crisis. You're not supposed to be texting. You're not supposed to be engaging in social media. So I think that that counterargument is not valid. The other arguments that will be made is some kids will need a medical exemption, and I'm fully in support of that. But I think that's a rare opportunity for a kid to need a cellphone. Very, very rare. And so I'm in full support of the away-for-the-day policy. And I just, in close, say, as a mental health provider in the community who didn't read my whole speech, there really is no support for having phones in schools. Kids are there to learn, teachers are there to teach, and phones are a consistent and constant distraction. Thanks.
George Thompson.
My name's George Thompson. I'm a TCAP's parent and grandparent. I'm also an attorney. I also was the chairman of the Community Mental Health Board a number of years ago, and I also incorporated Safe Harbor, served on their board, and worked on the campaign, initiated the campaign that created Munson Manor. I've tried to be involved and engaged with what the community needs for a long time, and I think this is another time where we have a need that needs to be fulfilled. As you all know, the policy manual and guidelines of TCAP's, Section 8510, recognizes that the school system plays a role in promoting health. The educational mission expressly includes the goal of promoting community health. I would quote to you, as you all know, "Teaching students to establish and maintain lifelong healthy, social, emotional habits." That's in there. The guidelines also recognize, quote, "That student welfare is paramount," Section 8400, "and our duty to, quote, 'promote a healthy environment.'" Given those objectives and recognizing the scientific fact that developing brains are different than adult brains and more vulnerable, we must consider that it's been well documented by research that cellphones, number one, have contributed to the established increase in depression. They've contributed to the documented increase in suicide, probably. Three, they are at a minimum of a distraction that interferes with the formation of quality relationships. Number four, studies document that cellphones contribute to anxiety and eating disorders. And lastly, two separate studies have confirmed that the mere presence of a cellphone, even if it's turned off, interferes with cognition. This research prompted the Surgeon General to announce his findings that have already been referred to, and I want to remind you that he said that cellphones pose a, quote, "profound risk of harm to adolescents." He urged establishment of limits and parental assistance through community intervention. It's well documented that a user's continuous attention is impacted by the technology that incorporates algorithms intended to keep children, or all of us, engaged with a cellphone. On that basis, adolescents, there are surveys where adolescents have acknowledged, more than a third have acknowledged, that they resort to near constant use if they're not restricted. So from a mental health standpoint, I'd submit that for safety, if we restrict pet rabbits and airsoft guns under Section 8390 and 8142, putting cellphones away for the day seems equally important. Thank you for your time.
Jen Turn... Jen Turnzmann.
Hello, I'm Jennifer Turnzmann. I'm a parent of three teenagers that attend TCAP, seventeen-year-old daughter, fifteen-year-old, and thirteen-year-old sons. I've lived in Traverse City close to 20 years. I worked part-time in healthcare as a physician assistant at Munson for almost 20 years. I started substitute teaching on my days off during 2020 because of the pandemic and shortage of teachers. Since then, I've started volunteering twice a week at East Middle School in the student lounge that's open during the lunch period. All the roles I just mentioned, TCAP parent, healthcare worker, substitute teacher, parent volunteer, have led me here tonight with concerns about the current TCAP's phone policy. Not only does cellphone use at schools affect learning and mental health, but has a huge impact on social isolation and loneliness. Cellphone usage at school is affecting relationships and positive connections between student to student and student to teacher. I have a copy of a 2021 study, reprinted from the New York Times, with a graph showing the increase in loneliness at schools beginning in 2012, which is roughly when teens went from using flip phones to mostly smartphones and when Instagram caught fire. The study shows students are more likely to agree, "I feel lonely at school" than "I feel I belong at school." I'd like to end with a story. As I mentioned, I've spent the last two years volunteering at East Middle School over the lunch period every Monday and Wednesday for up to three hours in the student lounge wellness room, which promotes a tech-free environment with board games, foosball tables, air hockey, cozy beanbag area, healthy snacks, record player, and amazing parent volunteers available to chat and connect with students. The lounge has been a huge success, but I still see countless number of students who would prefer to be alone on their phones than come to the lounge or spend time with another student. I make an effort to invite these students to the lounge on a regular basis, but I can't seem to pull them away from their phones. I worry about these students becoming more and more isolated. Phones in schools stunt social connection because of cellphones, quote, "We are forever elsewhere." In closing, I'm asking for an away-for-the-day policy to be implemented at TCAPs, which would help promote healthy social connections for students. Thank you.
Jody Mackey.
I'm going to agree with Paula. Lots of the things I thought I would say have sort of been said. So first of all, I'm Jody Mackey, 1058 Washington, and I'm a TCAP's teacher for 25 years. Listen to me. The kids need us to do this for them. They want us to do it for them. They want us to take these phones away, you guys. I do it on the Washington DC trip every year. And they balk at it at first, and they say, "Oh, you know, I don't know what I'm going to do." You know, I have this pocket system when they get on the bus, and they have to put their phones in a pocket. And they say, "Why can't we have them on the bus? We're not out, we're not on the street." And I said, "Because you'll never talk to each other. You'll never meet each other. You'll never engage with each other." And what happens in a three-to-four-day trip every school year is the perfect example of why these phones need to be gone at school. They start doing the old hand-clapping that we all used to do. They sing songs. They get to know each other. They ask if they can hang out in the commons areas after their meeting in different social groups than they ever would beforehand. And the only thing I would add to what I had just heard Jen say, and it is so true. You know, I'm a digital media teacher, you guys know that. I mean, if I were to make a video of what our hallways look like now, what our lunchtime looks like now compared to even a year ago, even with COVID, is just kids like this all the time. You know, laying on the ground outside doing it. You know, it's weird. So it needs to go. The kids will tell you that they know they don't have the willpower or the ability to monitor it themselves. I mean, how many of us do? I mean, you know, if it's in your pocket buzzing, you're wondering the whole time what it is, right? The only other thing I would say along with that is that I think in order to have that away-for-the-day policy actually work, you've got to put, the backpacks have to go. And I got to tell you, I'll just jump on that, too. I hate backpacks. I hate them for a number of reasons. Number one, I just had foot surgery. And you know what it's like to have a classroom of 33 with 33 backpacks laying around everywhere, literally? You think it's funny, but honestly, it's a trip hazard. They're in the way, it's annoying. Do you know how many perfume spills we have with kids with allergies? Do you know how much food spills? Toys, cellphones. And then ultimately, and I hate to use the word, but my biggest fear is a weapon. And then that's in my room instead of a student having to go at least to the hallway or to the locker. So there's a lot of reasons why I would like to see backpacks gone as well. I think if you keep the backpack policy, we can never implement this away-for-the-day. It will not work. So my ask is that I'm very supportive of away-for-the-day. I think it's, we have to lead, you guys. We need to take this information, and we have to be the leaders. Okay, I got it. And we can do that. But I think the backpacks have to go, too. Thanks a lot.
Lindsay Annalyn.
Hi, I'm Lindsay Annalyn. I'm a proud parent and fifth-grade teacher at TCAPs. I have a son who will be going into second grade and a daughter who's going to be in sixth grade. I'm a TCAP's alum and graduated from Central High School, class of 99. Many things have changed in our educational system between now and then, including technology usage in schools. And I am standing here advocating for cellphones to be away-for-the-day for grades K through 8. I've been teaching with TCAPs for 20 years, and as I reflect over the changes over the years within my classroom and the district, many are positive. However, the one thing that continues to have a negative impact on my fifth graders is cellphone usage. You may not even realize that this is an issue at the elementary level, but I can tell you from experience that it does impact students and has caused problems both in and out of the classroom. Five years ago, about six students out of 30 had cellphones or used cellphones and were part of social media. Fast forward to now, and over 75%, more like 80% of my fifth-grader students have their own cellphones. Personally, I was shocked when 22 students raised their hands when asked if they had cellphones and/or social media accounts during our personal safety lesson. Students have tried to sneak cellphones out to recess. Now we're bringing them on our many wonderful field trips, as Sophie mentioned. This cellphone usage on field trips has caused many issues, and I've ended up taking cellphones away due to these disruptions. Kids need to be kids. I'm not only concerned as a teacher about the impact cellphones have and inappropriate uses of technology have on kids, but I'm also concerned, as a parent, as my daughter goes off to middle school about the lack of social interactions and the amount of distractions cellphones have on students. As a trained teacher implementing the puberty education curriculum, we discuss how fifth graders become more independent as they get older. And with that, independence means more responsibility. Most middle school students are not developmentally ready to have a cellphone and the many responsibilities that come with it. When I took my students on a tour to the middle school, we entered the cafeteria, and I was shocked and appalled, frankly, at what I/ we saw. And I could see the same jaw-dropping reaction to some of my fifth graders as we looked around and saw very little social interaction taking place and more engagement with cellphone communication. I saw some girls making a tic-tac dance over in one corner, another group of kids taking photos of one another, and only two tables out of the entire cafeteria communicating face-to-face. It was truly disheartening. My stomach dropped as I looked around thinking of my own daughter and her peers in this situation. I know it made some fifth graders nervous thinking about their upcoming sixth-grade year and now owning a cellphone themselves. I even had a student ask me, "Mrs. Annalyn, do you think any of them actually talk to each other?" I couldn't really answer that question. I even saw an entire table of students on their Chromebooks playing video games during lunch rather than eating.
Thank you, Ms. Annalyn, your time's up.
All right. John Fazola.
Hello, good evening. I'm John Fazola. I am the proud parent of three wonderful kids, age five, eight, and 11, and they're extremely fortunate to be growing up here in Traverse City and to be students at TCAPs. All of them love Shel Silverstein. And one of their favorite pieces by Shel Silverstein is the one about the boa constrictor. I'm sure if you know Shel Silverstein, you're familiar with that one. It starts out with the narrator lamenting the fact that he's been eaten by a boa constrictor. Boa constrictor, and he tells you he doesn't like it one bit, right? And he goes on to lament, line by line, the boa constrictor's progress. It's up to his knee, you know, "Oh gee." It's up to his thigh, "Oh my," until it's too late. "Oh dread," right, that's the punchline. Everyone who came before me to give remarks on the cellphone policies made it abundantly clear, based on their varied expertise and experience, that there's a boa constrictor in our schools. It's there nibbling away at our students' focus when they're in the classroom. It's there wrapped tightly around their social interactions when they're in the lunchroom, swallowing up what should be face-to-face conversations and interactions with internet and social media distractions. It's there when our children are in the hallway, out at recess, and on the bus, pinging, glowing, beckoning, all-consuming. "Oh dread." But unlike the narrator in the poem, the board can do more than lament our children's and our educators' present reality and watch it unfold and swallow us all whole. You all can help change it. Adopting an away-for-the-day policy will help free our children from that metaphorical proverbial boa constrictor and when they're at school, and give them the freedom to focus on being better educated, more thoughtful, more caring, and happier humans. Thanks for all your time, and we really appreciate all the work you do on behalf of our community. Thank you.
Kate Zudersma.
Hello, I'm Kate Zudersma. I'm a freshman, soon-to-be sophomore at TC West High School. I spoke at a board meeting two months ago and would like to again share from a student's perspective. At the last board meeting I attended, I spoke about the harassment and bullying of LGBTQ, oh, sorry, LGBTQ plus students. I was able to grab the attention of Mrs. Berkowski and have a discussion with her, but since then I have heard of no change. Also since then, one of the students who has experienced that harassment and bullying, an openly trans and gay individual, has written a monologue talking about his experience. I also have his full permission to use the pieces of it that I've chosen to speak about. Quote, "We try to report it every single time, what is done, the equivalent of a slap on the wrist. We've been told there's a zero bullying tolerance policy, but apparently zero tolerance means that those that bully me and my friends can get away with a lot. One kid gets suspended for a few days and the same week when he comes back, he immediately starts harassing us again. I shouldn't have to fear for my safety at school. I'm supposed to be safe. I'm supposed to be cared for and I'm supposed to be heard, but I'm not. I'm not cared for. I'm hardly heard and I'm barely safe," end quote. When reporting these issues, the students see nothing of what happens. They feel forgotten or placed as a second thought. I understand that there's a privacy policy to protect the students who are, the student who was reported, but it's difficult for a person who has been attacked to have peace of mind when they have no idea if their attacker was handled accordingly, especially if they almost immediately go back to attacking. Due to time constraints, I cannot go into detail about my possible fixes to this, but do know that I have a few ideas. Finally, as a student, I believe it is important for me to be able to say my part about what is going on in our schools, especially about this cellphone discussion. As I noticed, there was one student voice out of many adults. I also believe that there are easy solutions to this. One of such is having about like once a week or so opportunity where a board member could come visit our schools during lunch or some other time and students could have that time to express concerns about the school. This would also get students more involved with the school board and could help get more student input. While I appreciate the time given for public comment, I feel like there are better ways to get student viewpoints. Happy Pride Month and thank you for your time.
Scott Richards.
This is perfect. I want all these parents in here and these young people to get a hold of State Trooper John Hatfield. He does a wonderful presentation on cyberbullying, cybersecurity for young people. So it was State Trooper John Hatfield. He has a partner that goes around, does presentations. I didn't get his name, but he's an excellent person. Second, these books, Red, White, and Royal Blue and Gender Queer, they don't need to be in the high school libraries. You have to be 18 years old to walk into an adult bookstore in the state of Michigan. And they don't need pornography in the schools. They're young. Their minds are developing. You can get addicted very early at age. I know that for a fact. And what I know right now, I know for a fact. Take the phones away. I have to get away from the phone. I have to put my phone away. I just, I can't take it all the time. So take the, let the kids interact with kids. You know, like in the olden days, you know, when we didn't have cell phones. I had a landline three and a half years ago and I was so happy with that landline. Because if you wanted to talk to me, you had to leave me a message and I would get back with you. Next, I would like to talk about the Nuremberg Trials. Little history lessons. It's about all the Nazis picked up after World War II for all their war crimes. A sergeant would say, hey, I'm sorry I raped all them women, but I was told by my captain that I could go ahead and do that. The captain would say, hey, I'm sorry I tortured all them people and put them to death, but I was told by the general I had to do what I have to do. I was told to do it. You do not have to do what you are told to do. You have a conscience. Every man and woman has a conscience and it was a gift from God. Even the generals got picked up and they started blaming, oh, Adolf Hitler told us to do it. Well, that's no excuse. And it didn't work out very good for him in the end. If you know about the Nuremberg Trials. We all have a conscience. It was a given by God as a gift so we would know what was right and wrong. Take the phones away from the kids, just during school. Thank you.
Bill Wiesner.
Bill Wiesner, Traverse City. And I'd like to start this Give a Reason DVD. Main topic, an old earth or global flood makes a big difference. Grand Canyon, top to bottom, 580 million years or thousands of years back to a worldwide flood catastrophe, maybe the flood of Noah. It's a $29 DVD, but you can copy and give them away. I'm going to offer some to anybody here. Makes a big difference on your worldview. Now, this was the Kinsey report that I covered in the first talk, where his, his, this was on the Donahue Show and it's all over the internet, Table 34. But his false foundation, and that's the foundation of CSE, Comprehensive Sex Ed. On the back, I've got this great chart and it's from the website, Matthew18.org. And it compares what the sexual risk reduction, that would be C, Comprehensive Sex Ed, Sexual Risk Reduction versus Sexual Risk Avoidance, that's abstinence, or Biblical Purity would be the third column. So I'm just going to go down and compare the charts here. And the current standard, gold standard is Sexual Risk Reduction, Comprehensive Sex Ed, with good cause, parents and concerned citizens have been horrified to find children are being taught from the underlying presupposition that they are sexually active. In response, the abstinence groups have rolled out an alternative for which they seek a piece of the federal education budget pie called Sexual Risk Avoidance, which is abstinence. But what does the Bible say and that we are? What does the Bible say? Biblical purity, that's the third column. Okay, and I encourage you to go to TCfamily.org and read the 40 quotes about Alfred Kinsey. That's the foundation of CSE. It's a false foundation. It's not true. It's a faith in something that's not truth. And, and they say it's science? It's Alfred Kinsey's science. It's false science. The origin is manmade for, the first column, again, three columns. Comprehensive Sex Ed is what we have here. Abstinence is taught in other spots, but Biblical purity. And see which one you think sounds the most inviting. And I hope you can just remember those topics. Comprehensive sex is one, two is abstinence, three is Biblical purity. Origin, one is manmade, two is Biblical and manmade, three is God's word. Focus, one is sexual rights, two is sexual responsibility and respect, three is identity in Christ. Starting assumptions, assume all children, one is assume all children are sexual from birth, which the chart shows, and need to be encouraged, graphic material shown to youth.
Thank you, Ms. Wiesner, your time is up.
Oh, that's right, I got, I was thinking five minutes, I'm sorry. Thank you.
All right.
Let's send a public comment.
All right. Thank you everyone for your public comments. There will be a discussion item along later on the cell phones, so. Superintendent's report, refer to Dr. Van Magda.
Okay, a few things for you tonight. District highlights for our survey for pre-bond planning. I just wanted to give you updated numbers. So far, we've had 864 community slash parents that have completed the survey, 579 students, 303 staff, and then specific facility feedback from staff we have had, 144. So well over 1,500 responses so far. So I just want to let you know we're still doing that. At this point, we are still putting that in our last communications as that'll be open through the end of the school year here and continuing to advocate for people to take that. Also, we have student handbooks, so we're currently updating those. Those will be discussed at the full board approval at our August board meeting. One of the things that we're taking a look at too that with that is a lot of our, our policies and those things have been a mix of mostly Neola and some Trune policies. So we are having some conversation with that about a possible switch and a complete review of our policies. So we are planning on next month in the executive committee of having Trune come and do a presentation on that. We'll give an opportunity for the committee, but it'll be recorded again for everybody to hear and see that. So that is one component as well that with, again, our handbooks have some specific things that really have the force of policy because the board approves that. But we are also specifically looking at that review of policy that I wanted to let you know. We also have the summer coming, the Sunshine Bus, delivering food all summer. So we have free food and basic needs will be delivered around the district from June 21st through September 1st. There'll be no service till we get July the 4th. The program is available to all kids 18 and under. Wednesday's schedule will be at Traverse Heights from 12:30 to 1:30, the Acme Township Hall parking lot from 2:00 to 3:00. On Thursdays, we will have Meadowlands Mobile Home Park from 11:45 to 12:15, Blair Elementary School from 12:30 to 1:30, and Interlock and Plaza Parking Lot from 2:00 to 3:00. And then Friday's schedule will be Kings Court Mobile Home Park from 11:45 to 12:15, Trade Winds Terrace Apartments, 12:30 to 1:30, and Silver Shores Mobile Park from 2:00 to 3:00. Food provided by Father Fred Foundation and basic needs provided by TCAPS Student Support Network. Any student in need who cannot access a location above first distance this summer can email the SSN Coordinator, KBKubish, at k-u-b-e-s-h-c-a@tcaps.net. Also, again, to let you know that we had a great turnout for our Montessori grand opening. Hard to give exact numbers, but you know, really think somewhere around 800 probably showed up, a fantastic crowd. So again, thanks to all the people that were part of it, all of our, our communications team, all of our facilities. They did a great job of getting everything last, you know, the last paper products in, like recycling cans and so many things like that for the building. Because it's neat going from nobody to like 800 people instantly. So that was really kind of fun to see. But most of all, they were our family, students and staff and community that came out to see the building. So many positive responses. We were just really proud to have that opportunity. Also want to let you know that the National High School Athletic Coaches Association have recognized John Lober, Central High School Track and Field Coach, for being nominated to the National High School Athletic Coaches Association Hall of Fame. John has coached in TCAPS for over 50 years, I believe, at this point. And the conference will be in Lincoln, Nebraska on July 25th. So lots of great things going around the district. Also, we have some updating, upcoming events. Our last day of school is Wednesday, a half a day. And June 15th will be the last day to complete the pre-bond planning survey before they start disseminating that data. We have a lot of other things going legislatively. We have the legislature, the governor and the legislature this weekend reached target numbers as far as the budget. We're not quite privy yet to what that is, but we expect that negotiations will happen this week between the committee chairs and we expect possible conference committee voting out the following week. So we are pretty hopeful at this point to have a budget before July 1st. It's going to be right up probably to that weekend for them to go on break. But right now, it looks, looks like things are starting to happen with that. And we will, we will shoot soon see those things starting to happen. Also, we are seeing some things happening with different labor contract components that are looking as far as bargaining rates and such that are going right now through the legislature as well that we're keeping an eye on. There's a bill that will probably be reported on a committee this week from the House, I believe, that is actually ending the law that you have to start after Labor Day for school. I will tell you, there's a lot of pushback from the Michigan Chamber, the Michigan Tourism Association, Michigan Restaurants Association on that. But our, our advocates in Lansing that we work with are telling us that they do believe that that will end up being put to the House floor and probably passed. So you know, that, that's a very tough thing, a lot and debatable in tourist areas, especially a lot of times, a lot of our kids work, you know, in, in those restaurants and those areas. So I'm just want to let you know though that that is likely to go really back to a complete local control thing, I think, most likely. Will it happen? It probably won't happen for this school year at this point because it would have to clear the entire second half of the legislature and we don't think that's going to happen in time. But we do think it would affect the following year from that standpoint. So I just wanted to make sure to update you on that. And so lots of things in Lansing with that going on. And then I do have, I do want to take any questions you might have on that and then I'm going to pass it over to Heidi for our state required 22, 23 state benchmark assessment reporting end of the year. But any questions on any of those things that I had talked about before?
I just have a quick question. If, if you could give us a kind of synopsis of your take on why there is a movement for local control? Is there a bunch of evidence, for example, that shows kids might be performing better academically by moving the calendar back or?
I think that it's just more the push that, you know, some of us are going so long into the summer, you know, and while this week doesn't kind of prove it, I mean, you know, a week before it was, you know, very hot and it was the same way the year before. So there, there are some things like that of people, I think. You know, there's that shift. You know, when that gap is, I think a lot of questions, but I think a lot of people feel so many activities start, MHSAs, sports, band, all those things start often that first, you know, week of or second week of August. And so there's many people advocate, you know, sometimes, for instance, you don't have, you know, a football game, you know, during school until the third week and for the band to perform and those kind of things in kids. So, you know, I, I think there's lots of different ways you can look at that. We tell you as far as the performance, when there's a lot more conversation about year around school programming or, or balanced calendar, I should say, that takes the 180 days and splits them more evenly across the year. There are districts like Holt and others that do run some elementaries on a schedule like that. And I know years ago that has been even talked in TCAPS. Probably more debate on that front of, of not having the quote unquote summer slide, you know, from that. But, but I think that it's just a lot of schools around the state do not have air conditioning and, and you know, that element. So I think that there's a lot of conversation and debate about the pre-Labor Day start with that athletics and band and those things. That's my take on it.
Isn't August, isn't late August just as hot as early June?
You know, I think that, you know, some, they feel not. And I guess maybe it's more tolerable at the beginning of the year than the end, maybe. But, you know, it's, I think it's a lot to do with them coming back with the sports and the band and that. You know, that's the general consensus I get, but.
I've heard that argument before and it always confused me.
Yeah, I, I made that argument before. I believe you gave a, a update about student handbooks. Okay, so the backpack policy was brought up. Is that a district policy? I couldn't find it or is that by campus?
It's been a practice and a lot of that came out of COVID. You know, so there was really lockers from that standpoint. When COVID came, we had the situation where we weren't able to use lockers, you know, from that standpoint. And so, you know, we've stayed on that from the standpoint. We have lots of small lockers in some of our buildings that, and kids just, you know, have not used, you know, from that standpoint. And, and with, you know, Chromebook in that element that, you know, a lot have brought that. It's, it's been debated. I mean, it's been talked. Tell you, we did, you know, there, there's a lot of questions about safety. We did bring that up with Jason Russell and the Security Education Consultants about any data with that element. And he's seen no study or data that's showing any effectiveness safety wise, you know, as far as of, of having, not having backpacks or even clear backpacks. There are some districts that have gone to that, but to be honest, there's no data that shows, you know, so if you have a clear backpack, but you have something, a knife or whatever, in a zipped, you know, makeup bag, you're not going to see it. So, you know, it, there, there are different feelings and beliefs on it, no doubt. But as far as raw, you know, hard data that backed that up when we asked, there was nothing that he had from a safety and security standpoint that could really back that up. So that's, that's where it stood from that standpoint. Kids generally prefer it much more because they're not hauling back to their locker and back and can just take their things to next class and class and class. But, you know, it, it's a conversation that could be had as well.
Thank you.
I think you touched on just Neola and Trune, but for just other board members, I know I've discussed, but it's my intent is in July to have a discussion item on committee structures and how to do policies because we've got a lot of policies coming through. So just know that that's kind of a likely agenda item for July as well.
Any other questions on that before I pass over Heidi?
Just to thank you, Joe, Mr. Esper, Ms. Houghton, Mr. Morgan. Graduation was great as always. So thank you to their, those individuals and their staff. The music was fantastic. The speakers were great. The weather was great. So, and then just congratulations, of course, to all the students and their families. So, and then just congratulations, of course, to all the students and their families.
Thank you. Any other comments before I pass off to Heidi?
I'll just echo what Trustee Raymond said. Highlight of our year to be able to attend three graduations in one weekend. Congrats to everybody for pulling off very successful events.
Okay, Heidi?
Okay, great. Make sure I'm on here. Yes. This will be brief tonight because most of you know already who sit on the curriculum team, is that this is our benchmark reporting from only NWA that we're required to do as part of our funding that we receive. So it just gives you an overview. And Megan, if you could click on, because I don't think I'm able to do that. This is the full report that we're required to post online that gives you your fall-to-spring data. And our fall-to-spring data looks very good for TCAPS. But we also look, if you scroll down further, there's also opportunities for you to click on, keep going down, Megan, opportunities to click on additional data that shows our spring-to-spring-to-spring data. So this is just kind of a teaser for what you'll see in the fall when we have all our state reporting back on M-Step, NWA, PSAT, SAT. So you'll be able to see how the kids did right now on this data sheet required by the state from fall to spring in areas of ELA and math. So not a lot to report, except that fall-to-spring showed large growth. We also, at the top, are required to report how we saw growth with our demographics. And then also looking at, in there, like I said, is linked also your spring-to-spring-to-spring growth, so you can look at that. Not high growth spring-to-spring, I will add, but you'll see this broken down a lot further when we move to the fall and are able to actually look at more than one data point. This is NWA only at this point. But it meets the requirements for our state reporting, and you will see a lot more in the fall once we have our state testing back.
So this is just based on the one test? Is that correct?
The test that occurs three times, so that benchmarking assessment.
Each point is between those periods?
Exactly, yes.
Am I reading this correctly that, like, for the first, that top left corner, we're saying, you're saying that thirty-eight point two-four percent are proficient at sixty percent being proficient?
Yes, and then your spring data, and then you'll see the winter and the spring. So it goes ELA, math, ELA, math, ELA, math. So you'll be able to see that. But again, like I said, when we get into the fall, we'll look at spring-to-spring because it's not as important, it's, it is important, but not as important when you're looking at spring-to-spring data. How much do we actually show that growth?
It's also just one test, so it's one data point.
Exactly, one data point. So when we get to fall, you'll see.
If we don't have the other data points, the other state doesn't give it to us until after.
Yep.
So once we have that, we'll do a full presentation on all that, like we do, start with the curriculum committee and go each year.
Question, can we have something like the budget book that would also put this in? So it's not all on slides and I have to print everything out?
For the data pieces?
For some of the data pieces, yes, ma'am.
The level of detail it gets into for the full one is extremely intense to the point where it's best used on a computer. Like, I'm sure you can get some summary, but it would be probably thousands of pages with how you can sort.
Well, I don't need to sort it perhaps to that overwhelming dam of it, but I think that maybe some summary points would be very interesting to just kind of track so that you have this year and then you have next year. I'm a simple person, Scott.
You should look at the, when we get to it, there's a summary report, I think, when we kick it off, your summary report, that we've used the same one, so maybe that would be a better.
Yep, the summary report would be very helpful because it shows you, like, just that comparison between NWA, M-Step, because if you notice, most schools choose a fifty percent, we choose sixty because it was more in alignment with then the predictability of how they're going to score on the M-Step. So we'll have a summary for you that goes over all the different data points that probably will be very helpful for you in the fall.
It would be great because this is great, you know, it's a good summary. It'd be nice to have an academic summary, some of it.
Probably could get the last year's one too sent over because that would help prepare for the next one.
Yes, we can do that.
I have a question too, sir. Is that, is that the overall one right there? We're looking at above quartet, is that the district-wide?
Scroll up, Megan, just a little bit, I got to see where we're at.
Oh, okay.
Keep going up, and then you'll see, those are the demographic areas, so Caucasian, Hispanic, you can see overall growth by demographic, male, female, English learner.
I know that there's a district goal of X amount percentage point increase year-on-year. Did we meet those targets?
We did in most cases at almost every school, but there were some, some schools that did not meet that two percent. When we look at spring-to-spring, if you're talking about what's required by the state and what we set for goals for fall-to-spring, killed it. You know, fall-to-spring, we killed it. But we also look at those other data points as well to look at year-to-year.
Any other questions? All right, thank you. Moving on to the next discussion item, Board Committee Reportouts, first curriculum committee reporting out by Trustee Moonmore.
Yes, so I'm going to try to summarize this in light of our thirteen-page agenda, and a lot of the pieces and parts are pulled out in our meeting anyway. So a few things were added to the consent for tonight. One specifically, field trip request to Japan. We're putting it on the agenda now to approve because of the efforts and fundraising that it takes. So that is on the consent calendar. No course catalogs, we had no updates on the course catalogs. Several curriculum items are on consent. So the first one, anatomy and physiology, they're currently using a textbook from two thousand and one, which is an online curriculum. So they are requesting a purchase of a six-year adoption, which includes assessment, which includes assessment tools. And the name of the curriculum is called the Fundamentals of Anatomy and Physiology. It includes one hundred and twenty hardcover books, sixty online textbooks, two skeleton models. The request price is forty-three thousand eight ninety-two. This includes a ten percent contingency, and it's funded from ESER curricular funds. Second item is English Language Arts ELA Curriculum. Jody Myers, the ELA Curriculum Specialist, is proposing the continuation of my perspective. This is to continue the contract for grades six through eleven. It is a six-year contract that includes individual digital and consumable resources. This committee consulted with North Ed, they did a staff survey, and they vetted eight different options. And so again, their recommendation is to approve my perspective. And then the Health and Physical Education Curriculum is proposing the committee, which included Doug Lee, Kirsten Morgan-Jones, and Dan McGee with committee members. They are recommending a six-year adoption that includes digital access and resources to be supported for a curriculum called Comprehensive Health Skills. Just to note that prior to this proposal, the Health and Physical Education Team had basically created their own curriculum over time. So they used different pieces and parts, wrote a lot of their own curriculum. So again, they're asking for comprehensive health to be approved on the consent calendar, consent agenda item. I'm going to skip the state benchmark reporting because Heidi just did that. Sex ed presentation, which Dan McGee did a wonderful job, so I'll skip that. And we actually had lots and lots of successes and celebrations, specifically a lot of, you know, acknowledgement of honoring our graduates. If, I'm not going to go into the details, just in light of our very long agenda. So if you're curious, I highly encourage you to watch the curriculum committee. They did a great job of pointing out lots of different schools and lots of celebrations and successes. So other than that, our meeting adjourned, and our next meeting is June twenty-sixth at four o'clock PM. I will actually not be present, so Megan's been helping me to find. I think Flynnway will lead the committee meeting and look for an alternate. So that's all. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Next committee out, Finance Operations reporting out by Secretary, sorry, Secretary Ballinger.
Okay, great. So the Finance Committee met on Wednesday, May thirty-first at eight AM. It was attended by Holly Byrd, Flynnway Humphreys, and myself. We did not have any public comments. We did have an excellent visual performing applied arts presentation. This was part two, so it was more of the digital visual arts part of the curriculum at TCAPS. We approved the meeting minutes from the prior month with no changes. And then we got into capital projects. There were two specifically, one on HVAC plumbing systems at Central High School and Saban Data Center, as well as Willow Hill. We moved for those to go to the consent calendar tonight for an amount not to exceed one hundred ninety-three thousand dollars, five hundred seventy-five, which includes a ten percent contingency from our capital bond funds. And then secondly, we also moved to consent the Northwest Education Services renovations that are occurring at Central High School and Oak Park Elementary for an amount not to exceed one hundred and eight thousand three hundred and fifty dollars, which also includes a ten percent contingency. That will ultimately be refunded, it's reimbursable, from Northwest Ed Services. Then we moved on to the curriculum items, which Trustee Moonmore just covered, so I won't go into those details. But we also moved those four new textbooks and other online resources to consent tonight. Again, all of those come from federal ESER funds, so that is pretty special COVID money that we designated towards curriculum purchases. And then third was food services. We have a dairy contract that TCAPS wanted to renew for three years with Prairie Farms for a total of one hundred and seventy thousand dollars per year, funded from our food services funds. And then we moved on to technology, which was the computer-aided design, also known as CAD, and publishing computers for an amount not to exceed one hundred and fifty-one thousand seven hundred dollars, which includes a five percent contingency that comes from our capital bond funds, specifically the technology allocation. That's also under consent tonight. And then lastly, in terms of purchases, kilns, eight kilns for our arts classes, including furniture and vent kits for an amount not to exceed sixty-three thousand and sixteen dollars, which includes a ten percent contingency from our capital bond funds, specifically the visual performing arts and applied arts allocation. We then moved on to some informational items. Firstly, the capital projects update, where we got a presentation from Paul Twing on the status of our construction projects across the district. And those are always available for full view online on TCAPS.net. And then we moved into the twenty-twenty-four pre-bond planning overview. We've gotten an update tonight from Dr. Van Wagoner about the survey responses, which are very good, now exceeding one thousand seven hundred and fifty, if I caught that correctly. Again, the surveys are open until this Thursday, June fifteenth, so we encourage all staff, parents, community members, and secondary students to complete that survey for board deliberations in mid-August, when we will be poring over the survey results and other data collected. And then we went over the budget very briefly. Christine Thomas-Hill has already covered part of that tonight. But we also will be getting into the twenty-twenty-two to twenty-twenty-three final amendment later on tonight, as well as the proposed twenty-twenty-three to twenty-twenty-four original budget. And then lastly, we had a finance update on categoricals, which are like line item allocations for special appropriations, if you will, for districts across the state. We had limited information at that time, and as you heard earlier, we will hear ongoing updates from the superintendent on that. And we adjourned at nine twenty-four AM. Our next meeting is Wednesday, June twenty-eighth at four-thirty PM here at the Tompkins Boardman Administration Building.
Ah, I was going so fast, I forgot to mention the elementary math textbook and manipulatives is also added to the consent calendar. So I apologize, I saw Ms. Houghton in the audience, so I apologize. This is for a six-year extension of math expression. So we've talked about it a couple times in curriculum. So again, that's on consent, I apologize.
She wrote down on you.
For metric. I know. She leaves, she's like, ah, okay, anyway, it's on consent, so.
Thank you for mentioning that.
I apologize.
And that is a big purchase because it was one point zero-three million dollars, which includes a ten percent contingency, and again, from ESER curriculum funds.
Yes, thank you, sorry.
Okay, just, I am reporting out on the executive committee from June first. I will try and skip over anything that has already been covered. So we did put on consent Board Policy five-one-one-three, inter-district open enrollment, school of choice that is now on there. We also placed on discussion for adoption or discussion and potential adoption today for student discipline, breaking that down into numerous categories, five-six-zero-zero. It's a replacement policy with a lot of new subpolicies by it, as well as the, I'm just going to say the head lice because I can never say the other word, predicliosis, but that is on there as well. Yeah, head lice. The, we had some staffing updates as well, including a elementary principal vacancy that I believe has been proposed to be filled, that is not on the consent calendar today. That is, that is not on the approval list on there, but that was, now has been, has an update on that. We have a bargaining unit that we will be discussing as well with contract, potential contract revisions. Staffing recruiting still have definite shortages in transportation and some other critical shortage areas as well. But we are, we do have sign-on bonuses, and we are working heavily to fill as many roles as we can on those. On communications, we do have some advertising. You'll notice some TCAP screens in family fairs. And also, we've covered the bus, but we also have a promotion with moms, dads, and grads, which was successful and pretty cool to see, multiple generations of TCAPS graduates as well, which should be running on social media over the summer. As we've covered the bus, I'm actually going to skip that again, so I'm trying to do this in a very fast fashion. We do have a Summer Explorers Club that is completely filled up, eight sessions, one hundred and forty-four students per session, so completely full. So that's a great achievement for sure. TCAPS Montessori was an amazing turnout, so thank you, everyone, for the community for showing up to that. That was a really cool building and I think our first school opening, so at least for most of our board members. And then we adjourned at nine twenty-five. So the next meeting is Thursday, June twenty-ninth at nine AM. All right, any questions? Moving on to Board Office Hours, thanks to Trustee Pack, who replaced myself at the last minute on May twenty-fifth, and I'll let you do the report.
I think they were looking for you, and that's why so many people showed up. So I kind of joked with people that I tried to go as Scott in drag, but I couldn't convince them that that was truly the case. So I backed out again into the old woman outfit. So I very much appreciated having a lot of people come. The first thing that we discussed was mental health. Paula Colombo, Dr. Colombo, came by and intends to visit with every single board meter, meeting person over the course of their board hours. Then the second thing is we had a nice group of people that met on cellphone policy. And they emphasized that they thought we needed a uniform policy across the district, so against all the schools. Way-for-the-day policy where hopefully we could convince students to actually leave their cellphones at home. Don't bring them to school. And we talked about exemptions in some cases for some students, and so that would need to be worked out as well, as we consider this as a policy consideration. And then the third group of people were three people in support of the wrestling program needing to bring it up to parity with West. They were representing Central's wrestling program. And what was interesting, they said they needed an increase in space, and they need updated equipment, that some of the mats are twenty years old. And so they're concerned about safety and parity between the programs between the two high schools. What was interesting too is that it was like a snowball effect, so that as one group heard what the other group was doing, things just added, you know? And so everyone was pretty much talking about the cellphone policy towards the end of things in agreement. So the next one actually will be done on June twenty-second, the next board the next Board Office Hours, with Scott coming to be there. Thank you.
There you go. And I should have less of a scheduling conflict. I will work harder next year to not schedule myself in summer. But appreciate it again for covering. So yeah, I'll be there on June 22nd. Horizon Books on the upstairs level at 6:00 to 7:00. Moving on to consent. Is there a motion to approve the consent calendar as presented?
I move that the Board of Education approve the consent calendar as presented without discussion.
Say second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Motion carries. Moving on to the discussion, next discussion item. I do have one question for trustees. I did place the cellphone policy as Item H, which will take a little time to get to. I don't think we should move above the performance, but if, if, if there's any interest, I can, I would entertain a motion to move it between A and B, just in case there's anyone in the audience who was waiting for that specifically. I'm happy to make that motion if.
I would second it.
Okay, so I will make the motion. I move that the Board of Education changes the agenda to reflect moving Item H, cellphone policy, to be discussed between Items A and B. Remind Scott that you do need a supermajority for this. I do, yep. Yep.
I'll second.
Andrew's second. And again, we do need a supermajority, so five out of seven. Megan, can you please conduct a roll call vote?
Trustee Newman-Bale?
Yes.
Trustee Raymond?
Yes.
Trustee Ballinger?
Yes.
Trustee Byrd?
Yes.
Trustee Humphreys?
Yes.
Trustee Moon Moore?
Yes.
All right.
TCAP?
I'm super for this, but yes.
All right, so motion carries. So moving on to discussion. Item A, Visual Performance of Applied Arts Presentation, devolved to Dr. Van Wagenen.
Okay, so we've had the chance to see a lot of this in two committees. So we have shortened it up just a little bit, just to make sure with the timing that we have tonight. But I think we're still going to get to all the critical points. And again, it is on video as well for anybody to watch. So I will pass it over, at this point, I believe, to Evan to go ahead and start us off.
Thank you. I'm glad I didn't add all those extra slides. So discussing, you know, these programs with the VPA funding and what it's, what it's been able to do for them is what we're here to do. Being the Director of Technology, I've had a lot of work, in particular with the Digital Media and Journalism Group, so myself. But I brought somebody with firsthand experience in Jody Mackey from East Middle School to also discuss a little bit of the things that I talk to in those committees. We'll go over that, that content here. So some points of pride. Without going through and reading every single bullet point, you can just see that every one of our secondary programs at some point has achieved some sort of award from that Michigan Interscholastic Press Association, or MIPA. And that's both for publications and video productions. So just again, a point of pride that at some point, all of them have earned some type of award for the work that they're doing in those various areas of journalism, theater, and digital media. So as you can imagine, with a topic like digital media, you have kind of a rapidly evolving skill set and need for equipment and different things to keep those programs relevant. So this VPA funding has been crucial to helping them, especially in my time being here. Have seen that in keeping those, those different programs up to date with the various equipment needs they might have, so that they can focus on, you know, with the students on that digital media production, helping them foster their creativity, working on critical thinking, and obviously the technological literacy that comes with that, and not so much focused on if they have the right equipment and when, in order to create any of that content and do that. Another really important part of this in using some of that funding mechanism, again, to kind of standardize and bring all of our programs up to par, is reducing that digital divide that students may see at home. If they don't have the access or the ability to use any of that equipment that these programs can provide, they can now come to school and know that, whether they're on the east or west side of town, at the middle school or the high school level, depending on that program, we're able to provide them with that equipment so that they can focus again on learning the skill set needed to, you know, do the good things that you can do with the digital media program, and not so much worried that they don't have access to any of that equipment that they might not normally get to. So now I'm going to hand it over to Jody Mackey, kind of to discuss some of the prior and all the great things happening at those different sites, according to digital media.
We timed ourselves, so I got my timer going. And I'm really loud, so I'm guessing you probably don't need me to be mic'd. But if I do, let me know. So I just wanted to, you want the mic?
Only because it's televised as well.
Okay, gotcha. Is that working? Okay. So I just wanted to say that, you know, when I started this program a long time ago, I was asked, hey, how about a video program? I used to do the yearbook in the newspaper. And I'm like, okay. And you start out with some things, oh, here's this, here's that. Try this, try that. And I figured out real quickly that this is a program, if you want to do it well, that needs money. I mean, that is just the reality. And we're going to show you just a really quick little snippet here of what we used to look like when we had no money.
No, I'm happy for him. I'm happy for him.
So what's your favorite color?
Blue.
Favorite band?
Green Day.
Favorite food?
Food?
Yes.
I'm thinking pizza.
Uh, what's your favorite part of the year?
So you can tell just from that, first of all, it looks pretty bad. But secondly, the sound is terrible. And one of the things I figured out really quickly in doing this type of program is that audio is really expensive, as are, as video cameras, things like that, right? So, you know, in trying to get a program off the ground that was something that we could be proud of and compete at the level we wanted to compete at, we need money. And so at first, I was doing car washes and getting people to help me do fundraisers and all kinds of things like that, and begging for money everywhere. And then eventually came this VPAA opportunity. And I just want to say that there's no single other thing that has helped digital media and journalism go into the 21st century more than the funds that come from this allocation. And I am so appreciative. The happiest day of my career was the day I opened the first boxes of the first time we got $25,000 to actually fund this. I mean, it was, like, I almost cried. But in all, and now it's gone to all four sites, right? So it's, it's given us an opportunity to compete at the state level. It's given kids an opportunity to do things that are real world. This is like a job, right? Instead of coming to class, they're coming to a job. And that's true for all four sites. I cannot say enough about what this allocation does to make this program legitimate. So you can see that we've got some really great points of pride here with each of the four sites. West Middle is now producing West Press, which is really cute and fun. And they're having a great time getting to know that with a newer teacher who's really on fire about it. And we're going to just show you a little blurb of them using our journalism platform here, this digital media platform, to recognize student achievement and, and points of pride and, you know, creating that culture in school, so.
Congratulations to the following Titan stars who were nominated by science and music teachers. Indigo is very bright and friendly, and she is always willing to help her classmates. Indigo is particularly patient and kind with her classmates and is a leader in her peer group and has shown tremendous growth this year in science.
So obviously, you can see and hear a significant quality difference, right? So that is really, truly due to the VPAA allocation. And, you know, we're growing and changing at a rapid pace in, in digital media. And again, the continued allocation gives us that opportunity to keep up and change as, as those things start to evolve. So we're able to use that to, you know, obviously highlight culture, climate, reinforce rules, all kinds of things. We're doing live morning announcements at East. You know, the principal is, is stopping in. Sorry, I'm jumping around. I know, Evan, I'm coming back. But all kinds of things are happening that are really great. And, you know, Central High School is doing an awesome job. They've got Front and Central, their Pines Yearbook. The Pines Yearbook is legendary. I mean, you know, I still have mine from when I was in high school, you know, all that. But here's the thing. You know, what a photo looked like 25 years ago, 30 years ago, and what a photograph has to look like now to compete, it's totally different, and the equipment is totally different. And if we don't, you know, have some of that, we're not able to do that for those students. So again, I just want you to understand that, you know, the game gets upped about every, I'd say, three to five years here. We've been able to do some awesome stuff, and we appreciate how many of you have interviewed with us, had your kids on our staff. I have multiple people in this room. And even in this audience, when it was full, I was going to say, raise your hand if your kid's been in some form of digital media yearbook or newspaper in the district. And it would have been a ton. So we're so fortunate that so many kids are involved and are able to be part of some of these amazing opportunities, like creating a documentary that was played at the State Theater, like being able to do live daily newscasts. Mrs., the, her son Urban is one of my morning anchors, sixth graders, one of the doctors that spoke, you know, right now. So I mean, there's just a lot of great opportunities for these kids. We're doing websites. We're doing great photography. It's happening at every site, and it's just really grown from very humble means way back in the beginning. So, how am I doing? Okay, two and a half. All right, so since you guys started giving us some funds, which is so appreciated, we have quality standardized equipment across the sites. And that's really important, too, because I want you to understand what it's like to be a new teacher thrown into digital media. It's a nightmare, okay? Most of them have no idea how to do anything. So just being able to work with a teacher on curriculum and how to teach the material is one thing. Imagine if you then had to figure out how to use that one camera that's different from the other camera, or how to use that one piece of software that's different from that other piece of software. It's, it's a big headache. And I used to have all those problems. And I'm so grateful that I'm able to call across town and, and be an assistant or help somebody with the stuff, because we all know it. We're learning, you know, we all have the same equipment that we can learn from. So I think there's a lot of things that can be happening, even more like the live streaming, but we're doing a lot of that stuff already. We're doing some great things. And I just, again, I can't say enough about how much this VPAA allocation has meant to all of these sites. And West High School with Melissa right here, her group is rocking it and killing it. You know, so every single site has something, a huge point of pride going on that wouldn't be viable without the help of these funds. So there's my pitch. Back to Evan.
So working a lot with Jody and the rest of those digital media teachers. So we've been able to establish, like I said, a replacement cycle of trying to get things, as we do in our own technology department, three to five years, which helps keep them up and current, keeps that equipment on a rotating basis. And that's been part of that ability with that VPAA funding. It's been a consistent basis for that. The sites wouldn't often have the budget themselves to do any of that kind of major equipment purchase. So it's just been crucial in facilitating that, helping them be able to go above and beyond. One thing we're always still working on is software licensing. Unfortunately, does not qualify with that VPAA funding bond. So there's always some extra things that we're working on. But to be able to have that equipment taken care of, so to speak, has been a huge push and enabled those teachers really to focus on that part. So it's just been really great. Like I said, in my experience, especially with that digital media group, being able to have that resource with that VPAA funding to help those programs grow.
All right.
All right, on to visual and fine arts, as well as STEM. We're going to punt a little bit today because our elementary teacher had to leave. Tara Gang was going to present, but Melissa's going to take over and present for visual and fine arts. And Nate Brush will present for STEM. Well, one of the things I really want to talk about with any teacher that you see here and in these programs is just their ability to stay up to date on the technologies as they come out. So like Evan was referencing earlier, the speed at which technology changes is so rapid that for us to stay up to date, these funds are critical for our programs to stay up to date. So you'll hear that over and over again. You'll also hear a little bit about not only the interior space and equipment that they need to keep their programs and build world-class programs, but also just about those physical spaces and making modifications that actually creates more of those opportunities for individualized and personalized learning. And so I'd like to invite Melissa up. And we do have a video here that most of you were able to see. We're going to skip over that for today, because we know most of you have seen it. But feel free to go back and watch it if you feel like you would like to.
Okay, is that on? I'm Melissa Clone. I am at West Senior High. Been with TCAPS for 17 years, West Senior High for 15. And I'm a, I work with Evan and Jody in the digital media side and on the yearbook side. But I also represent the fine arts, the visual fine arts department at West Senior High and TCAPS. So again, points of pride. We have an outstanding fine arts visual program at TCAPS. Big, long list there. 100% pass rate in our West Senior High AP Photography Program. Consistently above the national pass rates in AP Studio Drawing, AP Studio 2D, and AP Studio 3D at both schools. Grand Prize Michigan First Congressional District Art Competition with student work displayed in the U.S. Capitol, on and on and on. And really, we can't, these programs can't be sustained without allocation from the VPAA bond. Thanks. Since we have had allocation from the bond, we've been able to purchase updated equipment, especially kilns, camera upgrades for secondary sites and middle school sites, increased technology in all buildings, ability to compete with other schools on a level playing field, and more enthusiasm for the program using, again, what we talked about before, that industry-standard equipment and software. At the elementary level, a big ask is dedicated space for art. We currently have some elementary art teachers on a cart. Many times we're sharing, the elementary art teachers are sharing with music or other elective classes. And with only 30 minutes in some groups of students, it makes almost impossible to make sure the room is set up and ready to go for our young artists. So in this next allocation, we are asking for dedicated space for all of our elementary art teachers in every building. Various small equipment needs to update the elementary art program, light table, class iPad, mobile drawing, storage, sheet rack. These are just some basic materials in order to provide the curriculum that we have for our elementary art students, wedge boards, steel sand, flat file storage, cabinets, things like that. Flexible and moving classroom spaces for all sites, heavy-duty tables and stations, unlockable wheels with magnetic stools for easy cleaning. Again, there's no site budget for these, this kind of furniture and the materials that we need. A lot of the art materials are consumable, and so the site budget pays for consumables within the art program. within the art program, but anything beyond that, we really rely on the VPAA bond allocation. At the middle school and high school level, this is more of a safety issue. We'd need school spray booths and then electrical drops on the ceiling or the floor, depending on the site. At the high school, dedicated photo studio spaces, there'd also be for digital media and journalism with Ethernet drops and outlets from the ceiling for 33 computers in each class. And then a row of ergonomic computer desks away from the windows, so that windows can be utilized. Currently, at West Senior High specifically, we are in an old publishing lab and it was not designed for digital media, journalism, or photography. So, updating that lab. Whiteboard and projector at each end of the room that would allow for a wide center aisle for flow and to accommodate disabilities. No front of the classroom. The teacher can teach from anywhere in the room. The students can work with, in collaborative groups around the room and it's easy to segment students into different groups. Studio space at opposite end of the room with floor outlets or ceiling outlets, a wall-mounted backdrop studio system, again, that's a safety issue, and then a tethering kit for instructional camera and teacher desktop station. Also at the high school, we are looking for a permanent dedicated gallery space with overhead lighting for professional display of work. We really don't have an opportunity anywhere within TCAPS for ongoing professional display of student artwork. At West Senior High, there's a need for a proper clay and glaze mixing room. This is a safety issue as well, and dedicated area of that room for glazing with at least three sinks. And it just shows the bins that would be appropriate for the level of work and the space that they need at West Senior High. Just a quick recap, elementary specifically, dedicated art space at every elementary building, updated flexible furniture and storage, and then electrical drops. Middle school renovations to the East Middle School art facilities overall, updated flexible furniture and storage. High school updated, updates to the facilities, flexible furniture again, drops, dedicated display wall, permanent dedicated display gallery space, and clay glazing, clay slash glazing room. It's a lot. Our art department serves, just at the high school alone, almost 2,000 students. And so, it seems like a lot of needs, but with the consumables that we have that eating up the site budget, we really, we rely so heavily on the VPAA bond allocation. We're so thankful for what we've received and we really need that support to keep our program running. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you, Melissa. And now, we're going to bring up Nate Brush. He's going to talk a little bit about STEM. And especially, you know, one of the focuses is middle school area of STEM, which is our next area of work. We know we have our innovation and manufacturing labs coming shortly, so we're excited and anticipating that. But lots more work to do, again, in both areas to figure out how we're creating world-class programs.
I'm Nate Brush. I'm from West Middle School and the STEM teacher there. Just wanted to talk to where we've come from, where we're looking to go. And like when I started 20-some years ago, my classroom had 15 X-acto knives and that was it. The shop teacher had, I believe, the power tools that were bought when the building was made in 1970. So, and when I inherited that part of the program, those power tools were obsolete, broken down, I couldn't use them. And so, through the, throughout the years, with some site-based money, I've been able to purchase a bench mount bandsaw and one bench mount drill press. And that, as we, as the program has grown from just a couple of classes to now I'm full-time STEM, I assert off as mostly science, it's grown in to best meet the needs of students to optimize our time on learning. We need those, we need that more equipment and then space that supports that equipment. And we have from, you know, we, our roots are in the shop technology area. And as we, as STEM has come on board, we've evolved from just making things to being innovative problem solvers and working on those lifetime skills of collaboration, cooperation. We use the engineering design process and that, but that's a lifelong skill that transfers into all areas of learning and work. We keep our feet rooted in some of those just basic hand power, hand tools, power tools type things that we use with our robotics now to cut and shape pieces for robots. And then, but also, we move towards more of the high-end technology where we have robots and we have 3D printers and laser cutters. And so, we're trying to reach, working on reaching different tracks of people, some that will blend towards the trades and make a very good living from that. And then we have the other ones that will move more towards the technology side of things with the, with the, another blooming market where with, you know, with artificial intelligence and animation and entertainment and self-driving cars. Like, I have students that can walk out of high school with a pretty good job already at hand if they follow through with the coding side of things. And so, what we're looking for is space that supports, you know, that, I colloquially call it the dirty lab and clean lab, the dirty side of all the tools that create the dust and smoke and everything. And then, right now, it's just mixed with my clean lab with the 3D printers and the robots and things. And so, we're looking for a flexible space to, you know, optimize the learning experiences. And that looks like, you, spaces that we can, are not just inflexible in configuration, looking for barrier walls that can go up and down like a garage door to open and close spaces as needed. We're looking for climate control so we can have air purification, dust control, but also even with the, on the clean side of the light with electronics and the 3D printers, those are a bit more weather sense, or, you know, climate sensitive. And so, a climate-controlled environment for that. Looking for durable, flexible furniture. So, right now, we have the, you know, the district bought those, those student desks a few years ago. That's what we're using because when we moved our stuff from the old shop to where I'm now situated, those tables fell apart. And so, now we're using just regular student desks. And I always just cringe every time we get the hammers out and the drills out and just, oh, I hope we take care of this stuff, right? So, looking for butcher block type tables that we used to have, but that are on wheels and roll and move so we can change the space. I have, you know, we, we do air-powered race cars and that's a 30-foot-plus track. And that's really hard to put that up in a tight classroom so we'd be able to have that movement, we can move things around. You know, my current space right now is the old home ec room. So, it's set up for 12 kitchens, which is super fantastic if I had a whole bunch of flatware and pots and pans. But the cabinet space for this is not conducive to the size and shape of the equipment we use. And so, a lot of times, students' projects are sitting on their counters. Like, right now, where the kids are designing, building, hand-building their own solid fuel rockets, we don't have a spot to put them right now. So, they're just sitting on the counters. Even if you know anything about middle school kids, we like to see what their hands, right? And so, it's like, it's very tough to protect those projects. Same thing with the robots. They have such curb appeal for everybody. Everyone wants to see how everyone else is doing things. And so, just looking for storage space that would protect the students' work and protects the equipment where we're not using it. Yeah, so we're just looking for that flexibility of a structure and equipment. And just also, right now, most of, like, we have, I have 17 registered robotics teams through the first tech challenge. That equipment was all bought and purchased through an MDE Robotics Grant. Our laser cutters, our 3D printers, those are all bought from, or purchased through grants. And so, to be relevant, to be consistent, to be a leader and at par or preferably better than our other schools around us and in the state and in the nation, we need a consistent funding source to keep, to keep that going so we can be relevant and on the cutting edge and preparing our students for those lifelong learning, lifelong learning and career opportunities as we move along.
Great. Thank you. And so, one of the things you'll hear emphasized is the ability to stay up to date with technology, whether it's in art and digital media or in STEM. The other piece you'll hear about updated spaces, flexibility in space, what does that look like when you're looking at opportunities for transition between clean and dirty labs or between photo spaces and publishing spaces? And that is not uncommon. And when we think about where we're headed in schools and opportunities we have for all students, it's about looking and thinking differently about open and flexible spaces that allow for collaboration. So, some of you were able to go on visits to schools that allow this flexibility throughout, not only for art, music, digital media, you name it, but in spaces that are in the schools currently. Like, how do we go outside and use spaces differently to allow for that collaboration and flexibility for students? So, thinking, keeping all those things in mind and, of course, knowing that all those come with a cost. But, I mean, I think the expectation in TCAPS, of course, is that we build world-class programs. We have great teachers and great kids and how do we continue to do that? So, thank you for your time.
Is part of what you do what we used to call industrial arts?
Correct. So, so when, I just don't hand them the drill press and say, go nuts, right? So, we go through the, it's a process of safety, training, proper use, and operations of those. And so, so, yeah, so that is our, you know, our background, our roots would be in industrial.
Yeah. I mean, all orthopedic surgeons get their start with some of those tools. The other thing is, is I find that a lot of times, you know, we're so focused on how technology changes, but a lot of times, we don't focus very much on how to fix what we've got. And hopefully, we still do some of that.
So, are you talking like?
Lawn mowers. How do you fix a toaster? How does a toaster work? How does microwave work as opposed to an induction oven? You know, how do you understand how these different tools actually work?
You're speaking to my heart on that, quite honestly. And that is, that is as we shape, as continue shaping the curriculum for this, as we've, as we've gone from, you know, you know, for the longest time, trades were not promoted well. And we're suffering from that right now.
Makes a tremendous difference in how big the landfill makes, gets.
And so, if we can incorporate that, I would, I would love to bring that on board as well, for sure.
Thank you.
And it's a difference between high-tech and low-tech. So, we do some collaboration with NORTA at East Middle, they did for years, I'm not sure if they did at West, about how to fix bikes. Like, how do you get bikes up and running and working? So, lots of opportunities in both spaces.
We repaired, we repaired bikes for NORTA for their bike library. We had that program going as well, then COVID came along and reached some havoc.
How things work mechanically versus electronically.
Yes.
Crew tech has a great small engine repair, so lawnmowers and toasters and snowmobiles and four-wheelers.
But, you know, it doesn't hurt for the majority of people. They expect to set up a household to have a preliminary understanding of how their house equipment works. It doesn't hurt. But anyway.
I got a quick question. Why do we call it STEM and not STEAM?
Well, there's lots of different answers to that question. And that's actually goes around and round. Even at the state level, sitting on the MySTEM council, we hear a lot about that. Mostly because, at least at the state level, it's because they talk about where job demands are and how high the job demands are in those integrated pieces of science, technology, engineering, and math. That's where it was rooted. But doesn't mean that there isn't art incorporated in every single piece of that. So, when you looked at that art video when we first started last time, it talks about that artist piece that's integrated throughout. It had to do with, I think, originally, in the demand pool for jobs, that's where it was focused. It started with STEM. And then, you get into other things. If we add A for art, then it's STEAM. And then, we add stream because there's also reading involved in how you integrate all those pieces. So, then, many cases, you hear people go down that road of what, what do we call it? So, there's lots of answers to that. But I think we have always consistently stuck with just the STEM piece because it's at the core. Doesn't mean other things aren't attached to it or involved in it.
I'll just add real quick, like, I have students electronically making music, either web-based programming, or we have little physical things, that's one of the options they can do. We have opportunities for extensions for when a student finishes, finishes project. The next step is, okay, we've got the prototype. Now, how do we make this look nice? Because the next step is, before it goes to market, you got to present it to, if someone's going to fund you, right? And so, how can we make this look appealing to people? We are making skateboards this school year. And part of that is, how are we going to paint the deck or what graphics are we putting on the, on the deck to make it look really good? And so, not, those things are happening.
Yeah. Okay.
Yeah, and it's not, it's not to negate any of that because it's all integrated into it. Yep.
Thank you, Nate.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. All right. Thanks, everyone, for the presentation. Moving on to the next discussion item, which is now item H, cellphone policy that was added. Kicking off, I don't know if anyone has a start to it. Good?
I, I think that what we were thinking of is we're going to need at some policy, or some point, to revise the policy we have on cellphones and to draft that related not only to cellphones, but social media use and availability during school hours. And to have this available for board consideration this summer with the idea that hopefully, we'll be able to think about applications come fall, is, I think, the idea. And to have enough time that we can welcome input from teachers, parents, a variety of different people. So, it's not just a segment of the population driving the whole thing, that we can actually get this to be a useful sort of policy. And I think it was just to kind of get us thinking along those terms, kind of setting ourselves up for the tea off.
All right. And I would probably add that the speakers today in public comment were amazingly articulate and varied on the arguments of the subject more than I think we've ever heard on public comment, just like varied opinions. So, I definitely do agree that we need to be looking at it sooner rather than later. I know that we've got a, something coming up on July, but to talk about how to do policies in general, which we'll probably clarify, but we can, I would suggest we ask the superintendent to start working on it and we can figure out exactly the timing, but timing is of the essence, of course.
We've already, I've had the chance to talk with our executive team on it and Connie's already pulled a lot of different policies that other districts are doing. Kristin's talked with our secondary administrators to really be with that. We had our, our roundtable with our different employee groups that we have once a month and Erica was the board member on that. And there was about, I think, a 15, 20-minute conversation on it as well. Dan Tiesworth, who's our East Middle School principal, talked that after he and I had talked, that I knew after talking with Beth and some other members that had come up in that meeting. So, they're already kind of exploring that and talking about that. There are a lot of tentacles, you know, that are going to have to be talked about. For instance, how does it affect staff and having them in classrooms? You know, that are going to have to be talked about. So, there are just lots of different things that it's going to be pretty wide and intense as far as conversation of, you know, like Heidi's mentioned, there are some classes that use them a part of classwork, you know, specifically. So, again, and maybe that's an exception. I mean, like, we're going to really need to talk through some of those things as we go through it, if that's the case. You know, but I think we're prepared to, you know, spend time here throughout the rest of our summer as far as meetings to really have a conversation, starting with the curriculum committee and then executive committee this next month, to have some information for you with that and work through that process over the next couple of months here and see where it lands.
One of the things, too, is to find out what programs we do have that rely on using them in the schools.
And we're relying on our principals to really kind of do that legwork and, you know, to bring that. I think that they really want to make sure they're a deep part of that conversation. You know, here with it. I think that's what was expressed to Erica in that meeting and correct me if I'm wrong. But, so, you know, we've already, I've already had them start the conversation and they're already working towards that. And it'll be, you know, we do a lot of policy work in the summer normally. And this will, this will be a part of that and, but it will have to also influence the student handbook, you know? So, there's lots of, like I said, there's a lot of tentacles that just we'll have a part of, that we're just going to have to deeply have conversations on where, you know, all those things lie.
I think it would be super helpful to have like a parent education aspect to that, much like we do with the gun safety.
Yes.
You know, because that is a huge component.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah. I mean, I, I was just sorry.
I'm guilty.
I think we're all well aware of how deep this goes. I mean, I, as a parent of a kindergartner and a third grader, I mean, this is, fortunately, like, we're not at that stage yet, but I think, it sounds like we're getting really close with fifth graders having them. So, you know, but, I mean, this is, it's heartbreaking, really, to, to hear just the lack of social interactions and that kind of stuff. Obviously, there are, there are pros to cellphones and maybe not social media as much, but, but definitely cellphones and just communication with parents. And I get all of that, like, you know, I mean, there, there are pros to it, but I think we'd be doing the students a disservice if we didn't address this.
And, you know, discipline. You know, that's one I know the principals are still looking at, like, you know, it's going to be a huge task, you know, from that aspect.
But there are a lot of schools that have looked at that.
And I agree. And we, and we'll, and we'll have that, you know, as I said, but these are pieces of, like I said, the handbook is going to have to be put into. And so, we'll, you know, we do have a lot of examples, you're right, Beth. And so, we're going to be prepared to share those here in July and, and like I said, work ourselves through that.
Since Evan's here, do our firewall, does it block like Facebook and TikTok and all Instagram and every other one that I don't know about?
So, so we can control if they're using our network. So, that's where the problem.
So, if they're on our Chromebook.
If they're on our Chromebook or if their cellphone is using our Wi-Fi, then, then we have those sites blocked. But as soon as you go to that cellular network, that's where we don't have that.
But if we, if they didn't have access to their own cellphone and all they had was their school-issued Chromebook, they would not be able to access the social media accounts.
Correct. That's already been placed.
And to the point about enforcement, I mean, I definitely want to hear from teachers and administrators and get that full spectrum of viewpoints on this. But I'm afraid that there's already enforcement issues right now with our current policy because right now, our policy is no cellphones used in the classroom. So, they're already having to police this. No matter what we do, they're going to have to police this. And, you know, if a kid's in high school and they got their laptop open, but then they're using their phone behind that and the teacher's at the front of the classroom, they can't see that, or they can, or they can suspect. And they're dealing with this already. And so, you, you hear about these states, these districts downstate that are top academically, East Lansing and Farmington. And it's pretty enticing to say, if they're doing it because they're putting academics first and the mental health piece, why aren't we leading on this? and the mental health piece, why aren't we leading on this? And I just want to thank these members of our community, Jill Hammer in particular, and, um, for doing all this research and really helping us. As it's been eye opening to me.
Yeah.
And I, and I, just in terms of process, given that we have two full months before the new school year, I, I liked how the.
Well, two full months is not, nothing in government terms because we have to, we can't discuss anything outside of a public meeting here. So it's, uh, so the public does know it's, 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 two months is quite a task with something so complicated. When we have to build a policy that isn't just a pol, a normal policy, it has to have deep thought and commitment from multiple people, including the board and staff and the principals and the students and the families to do. So I, I, I completely agree it's worth it. The points hit home heavily to me. It's, it's a problem in my family. It's a problem for most individuals, adults and children. And we do need to do better at teaching everyone. So I, I agree with it all, but.
And I think just one piece of intel you could bring to us, because we all won't have the opportunity to call other superintendents or board members across the state, is to, for you to learn what they've experienced and share that with us.
You know, is to be, well, I, I, I've reached out already. Dan Bames retiring right now from Forest Hills and they pretty recently had gone through this. And, and it was somewhat controversial in the community, um, you know, of, of different folks. So the, you know, that'll be interesting, kind of his perspective. And, and, uh, you know, may even have a chance to maybe even get him up here and maybe talk about it possibly. We'll see. Um, you know, there, you know, when we look at similar districts to us like that, they're probably one of the, the closest, you know, in that aspect. And, uh, so we'll, we'll definitely learn and see where it goes.
I, I'd like to just say that, um, you know, I think that we know from the surgeon general and lots of studies out there that this is, social media is not great for kids. And we know that. And so as difficult as it might be, I think we owe it to our children to teach them, um, when it's appropriate, when it's not appropriate. And so, you know, I personally have witnessed firsthand the same comments I heard from, uh, community members that spoke tonight of walking in and looking into a lunchroom and seeing every single kid on the device. And, and my kid specifically, who is socially uncomfortable. And so I'm not helping him be better socially, um, when he can just disappear into his device. And it is constant. Um, it is all the time in the hallway. It is all the time in the lunchroom. It is all the time at sports practices. It is all the time on the sidelines. And so we have to do better. I mean, I a thousand percent agree. I think, um, I think the, um, uh, the away for the day, I think, should be a district implementation. Um, and that's just my own personal opinion. I think we owe it to our children is, is all I will say. So I would hope we would review the policy and, and come up with, um, and again, include our administration. I don't know. I mean, opening it up to the community, I don't, you know, I mean, I, I like that idea, but I also think it really, um, can be a, a district decision too, as to what, what we decide to do. I mean, we didn't have cell phones when I was in school and we seemed to manage fine with divorced families and security issues and all of the arguments that you hear about. Um, so I think that, um, that's just my opinion, so.
Definitely something I think that, uh, adults as well as students.
Yes.
I mean, because as I was listening to all the public comment, watching people in the audience looking at their phones and some getting a phone call and getting up and leaving. And then I look around at our desktops and we all have our phones out.
No, mine's in the bag. Mine's in the bag.
Thank you, Beth.
Hey, I have to be the timer.
You did that for that.
No, no, normally I would because I refuse to be a tool of a tool.
So yes, I would like to thank all the public comment. And I, this is definitely something we need to take a look at. I mean, we are so data driven on everything else and we have all of the data.
Maybe we need to make a TikTok or Snapchat about why we shouldn't have social media.
Shh. I can't even log into my Instagram account anymore.
You know, it is interesting. I did, Joe, um, we had a meeting the other day and I did not know this for, um, oh, which one was it? Was it, um, Snapchat? You, they require you, as students, to use their TCAPS email as the registration for it and the system to be able to show the, the, and the kids are grouped by the school that they go to. I did not know that. And, and Joe, when we, we talked about it the other day, that there's a reality. So when we talked about it being targeted towards schools, remember when we had the, the thing? They, they only will, can use to get in the group of the kids at that school, their school email addresses, the verification. I thought that's interesting.
And that's been one of the most problematic forms of.
I did not know that and, you know, the, but, and, and just kind of learned, you know, that from that conversation, so.
Thanks.
Thank you.
All right. So I guess, uh, yeah, anything we can do to prepare, it's going to be tough to get it through that quickly, but we will do everything we can and expect to hear more. Moving on, discussion item B, uh, school safety update. Defer to Dr. Ryan Wagner.
Yeah, so a few things for you. Um, I want to let you know, uh, we've been working diligently, our administrators have for, I'd say about four months now. After we, uh, had our, uh, report from Secure Education Consultants, one of the things that has really, um, become, uh, best practice that we're seeing from state police and others is, um, a threat assessment protocol. And we've had one and we've built one and we felt very good about what that is. But as time goes literally month by month, there's new things that come into play. Um, just conversations with law enforcement of what they are and are not have, it will, are or are not willing to, um, respond to just based on capacity. You know, the, the, the protocol of if there's a situation, who are all the people that should weigh in and part of that decision-making process from safety, discipline, all those elements? So we, uh, Patrick and, and, uh, Kristen, uh, Jones Morgan have been working very closely with a group of, of principals and others to really keep that at the forefront each month with an idea of going in the fall with an updated version from what we've been using. Not changed a lot, but little tweaks. Um, to just give you an idea right now, every time there is any kind of statement, you know, and, and, and it can be as simply as a kindergartner say, I'm going to shoot you. Now, do they mean that's from with a squirt gun? Do they mean what that is? That there's still a, a level of decision-making that has to go into, you know, the, the validity of each of these comments that a student makes. So to kind of simplify that for our principals and elementary principals, how this year changed that from a shooting of a teacher by a elementary student? In, I want to say Newport News, if I remember right. And, and really so many of our elementary principals now are dealing with issues that only our secondary principals have dealt with in the past. And so to kind of make that a little easier with connection directly with law enforcement, I'm the sole point of contact every time that happens. That I am no matter what, 24/7. I am that person that takes that phone call from that principal if that situation happens. To trying to simplify that in element. I think a part of the threat assessment team is they're really trying to look at, maybe it's better to have a team approach at that to be able, and have some standards to that, examples to that and those elements. Um, I may have a role in a process, but maybe if, you know, that there's a, a question or a split between the group of whether there's some validity, you know, into that threat. And at that point, do I really need to call maybe the chief of police or the under sheriff to say, we really need you a part of this to help us make that determination? So they're going through that process and, and we, our plan is, is we really didn't want to confuse everybody by introducing anything here towards the end of the school year. We've had a very thorough process that has served us well. At the same point, it's been very dependent solely on me as that single point of contact for them to make that. And I think that they, they are looking at more of, you know, a, a social worker that's in a building, you know, and, and a couple of people to really at least initially look at that, um, to be able to say, okay, is there any element that this has, um, any credibility whatsoever? And then, you know, if it doesn't, that it may not need that involvement from, you know, the central office from that point. But, um, we want to have, so here, where are some questions that need to be answered, you know, for that, those things? So they're working on that. And I just want to let you know that, well, they'll be continuing to work that here through the summer. But our plan and intention is to have that, um, updated for the fall. Want to let you know also that, um, uh, we have an agreement region-wide with emergency management on a door numbering system that has currently been installed for the first time in our district at Montessori. So where every door is numbered, we have a very protocol across all now of our region of the way that's done, the sequence of the doors, which direction those numbers go. So, uh, what the font size looks like, all those kinds of things. And so Montessori is the first building and we're going to continue to go through the district and implement that protocol with our emergency management and, and that protocol and something that, um, we're happy to have now in our region agreement so that when Career Center is done or another district, law enforcement are able to go, okay, if it's door 16 and this is door five, they know which direction that's going in those elements. So, uh, a, a really good thing we're working on that was recommended by Secure Education Consultants as a part of their assessment. Want to let you know that, uh, we are working right now with the city manager and, uh, Chief O'Brien, who's retiring, uh, the end of the month, um, working on trying to get scheduled with the city council on a conversation about the school resource officer at, um, Central High School. Um, in, in an initial conversations having with them, um, they are really interested in having, um, staff representation from administration, Jesse, um, uh, myself. I'm also mentioning board members. Um, so once we have that date finalized, it's most likely to be one of the next two Mondays. I think at this point, I had the chance to see the mayor today, uh, over at Traverse Heights for the amazing shake, the student of the year award that we interviewed the students for. Um, and I know they're trying to figure that out right now. They're still trying to see if they have enough for a, um, a majority of board members or of city council members to make that. But once I know that, I'll let you know to, if you have an interest in also giving thoughts on that. And, uh, there is a precedent that the Career Center is within the city, uh, limits and does have a Traverse City police officer that has been there, um, as an SRO. And so, uh, but, um, this would be the first that we've had it within TCAPS in a while. There wasn't a long time ago. There were, uh, SROs across the district. And so, um, there will be that conversation. Part of our grant funding is that we're able to do half and we're asking them to do half, um, a part of their budget. And so, uh, we'll be doing that. And once I have that date, I will let you know. Um, we are getting ready to start construction and adding the secure vestibule at Traverse Heights Elementary in the same standard that we've put in in other elementaries as well. Um, and then again, I had mentioned the student handbook. And, uh, um, again, that, that is probably going to be pushed right to the August limit of when we have to do that, um, with all the updates and things that we're discussing. But I just want to let you know that will be coming and that is something that we do have the board adopt. Um, that way it has the force of policy, um, across the, the district for administration. So that's what I have for you for a safety update. Any questions on any of that? Lots of doors going into across the district at this point, um, this summer to finish off the Michigan State Police grant, um, continuing to update that hardware, um, as we go as well.
All right. Any questions? All right, moving on to the next agenda item, uh, discussion item C, resolution to amend the 2022, 2023 budget, defer to Dr. Ryan Wagner.
And I will pass over to Kristi Thomas-Hill to, uh, go through the gauntlet of, uh, of, uh, school finance here.
So, um, in tab three, um, this is the portion for amending our 22, 23 general fund and special revenue fund budgets. Um, this would be our final amendment of the 22, 23 school year. Not a lot of drastic changes, um, obviously, uh, some changes throughout. Um, but we are showing, uh, with our variance, which is typically around 1.5 million, we're showing, uh, an add to fund balance of about $55,000 when all is said and done. Obviously, uh, we have the summer months to go through an audit. Um, and with about 20,000 accounts, that could change just a little bit. Um, but I don't anticipate it to be very far off. So that's how this, uh, current fiscal year, uh, should be ending.
All right. Any questions from board members? Um, we do have to adopt a resolution to amend as well. If I have anyone who would like.
I move to adopt a resolution to approve the second amendment to the 2022, 2023 general fund budget and the second amendment to the 2022, 2023 special revenue fund budget dated June 12th, 2023.
My second.
All right. Uh, Megan, please conduct a roll call vote.
Trustee Moonmore?
Yes.
Trustee Bird?
Yes.
Trustee Ballinger?
Yes.
Trustee Humphries?
Yes.
Trustee Newman-Bale?
Yes.
Trustee Pack?
Yes.
Trustee Raymond?
Yes.
All right, motion carries. Uh, moving on to the next discussion item, resolution for certification of 2023, 2024 tax levy. Um, defer to Kristi.
So this is, uh, directly related to the earlier budget hearing where we were identifying our, um, tax levies, uh, for the purposes of the original budget for 23, 24. Um, the adoption, uh, resolution is in front of you. We have tax collection in both July and December.
Okay. Any discussions or questions? Do I have a motion?
I move to adopt the resolution certifying the tax levy for the 2023, 2024 school year dated July 1, 2023.
My second.
All right. Any other discussion? Megan, please conduct a roll call vote.
Trustee Humphries?
Yes.
Trustee Ballinger?
Yes.
Trustee Bird?
Yes.
Trustee Moonmore?
Yes.
Trustee Newman-Bale?
Yes.
Trustee Pack?
Yes.
Trustee Raymond?
Yes.
All right, motion carries. Uh, moving on to discussion item E, resolution to approve the original 2023, 2024 budget. Uh, defer to Kristi.
Yes. So, uh, first of all, I want to give a shout out to Sandy West and Julie for sticking it out throughout the meeting. Um, but they have put all of this, uh, information together. And one of the things that is so challenging for the original budget, as you know, we still don't know what our budget is. But by law, we have to approve a budget prior to July 1. So this is a presentation to show you what information we've used to, um, start the original budget uh, so that we have one in place prior to July 1. So in the, uh, booklet on tab four is the actual presentation. Tab five starts all of the spreadsheets, um, that outline our budget numbers and assumptions uh, throughout a couple of years. Um, so at a very, very high level, just the, um, assumptions that we are using for the per pupil revenue, um, we took the middle of the road between the House, uh, Governor and Senate at a 458 per pupil increase. Um, that would leave our per pupil allocation at 9608. Um, so those are the assumptions we're using right now for the original budget. Um, when we get that new information, we will bring that forward to you in a budget amendment, likely in January or February, so we can adopt true numbers. As far as the student count goes, um, again, we are using estimated numbers. Um, we did receive the Middle Cities report that we're suggesting about a 190 decrease. Um, we are finding with some added programming that it's not likely to see that full 190 decrease. We're currently budgeting 150. And we are still seeing some fluctuations, especially within our new junior kindergarten program that we are adding to every elementary building. Um, so you can see the net increase in revenue based on losing 150 students. Um, and the increase per pupil, uh, that net increase in revenue is about 2.6 million. Um, I think it's really important to understand where our money goes. For our general operating budget, 86% is, uh, people, salaries and benefits. Um, uh, as a lot of the other programs had shared, uh, some of the supplies are funded out of general fund, but they really rely on those capital bond funds. Um, and this just highlights, um, how, how important it is that we have staff, um, that we're a people business and that's part of our mission. Um, this one I think is important, um, used to be even more important, uh, back in, uh, I think fiscal year of 16 was really important to start talking about this. You know, we did have a, a very low foundation amount. Um, we did get a, a mid-year cut in fiscal year 12, uh, 400 and I think $70 per pupil. Um, and that is something that we've been discussing, uh, with the board as it relates to having a proper fund balance to be able to withstand something like that should happen in the future. Um, hopefully that's not the case. Um, but it did take several years to, uh, recapture those funds and get, uh, uh, foundation amount that is actually increasing. So we're on a good trend. Um, this gives you a historical perspective and I usually go a little bit further out than 10 years just because we did have that anomaly from fiscal 10 to 12. Our student count, uh, we are unfortunately in declining enrollment, as is the most, most of the state of Michigan. Um, uh, like I said before, I do think with the added programming and, uh, some of our creativity in shared time services, we're able to, um, hopefully not lose as many students. Um, but we are adjusting accordingly. Uh, so it is important that we're looking at our student count along with our revenue and makes, making sure that we're right sizing those revenue and expenses. Fund balance, I think it's important to, uh, take note of that. Uh, we have made, um, an investment in fund balance with some of our SR funds. We have made an investment in fund balance with some of our S R funds. And so we are in a pretty good position moving forward. If something were to happen with a recession, I think we would be in a good position both between looking at our expenses and having that fund balance available to be able to still maintain contract extensions and not have major budget cuts in the future years. The special revenue funds, so right now we are estimating a balanced budget. We are assuming in the food service budget, free breakfast and lunch. It looks like that is going to pass. I've not heard anything other than that. One of the things that's a little bit different with that program is it's not quite like the COVID free breakfast and lunch. It is the state subsidizing those federal funds. So we still have to do a lot of our reporting, if you will. It's just a little bit different in how we have to handle it. It's not quite like all free from the federal government. Community service funds, childcare programs. We've been very fortunate with some grant funding over a couple of years now not have to, not to have to raise our fees for services. We may see in the coming years, probably next year or the year after, a need to reevaluate that, especially as we have rising employee costs. We might have to look at our cost for those programs, but we've probably been, I think, three years of not raising fees for parents. We were very fortunate this year to receive several grants from the state and we've been able to subsidize some of that funding for parents. Our learning enrichment and athletic program, that is a fee for participation. We service about 5,000 students each year in that program. And then we obviously have our capital projects fund and debt service accounts. We've talked quite extensively about both of those. We do have monthly updates on our capital projects funding and our capital project timeline on a monthly basis at our board finance meetings and those are posted on the website. As we did talk about our debt service funds, we currently maintain 3.1 mils on all of our property. And that is currently with our 2018 bond authorization funds. Again, special thanks to the people that actually do all of the work, Sandy West and Julie, for putting this all together. It is a lot of work and I'm very, very proud about our certificate of excellence in financial reporting. This book, along with our audit book, it's all additional information that we try to provide so that we have additional transparency to the board and to the community.
Ms. Thomas-Hill, I just have one quick question about the fund balance back a few slides. I remember last year we did increase using $1 million in S R funds towards fund balance.
Three.
But it looks like we actually increased by two, like from.
We added, we had originally planned to do 3 million over three years and we had the opportunity last year to take all of it upfront. So we did do that.
Okay, so we.
So we were able to get to 12% fund balance.
From like a little over 10 million to the year prior. This graph just makes it looks like we went up by 2 million.
Well, and yeah, and part of this, the challenge is we have estimates on both fiscal '23 and '24. So it's a little bit deceiving. But we're a little over 13 million, projected to have fund, fund balance of 13 million this year.
And then we have a weird timing where we didn't get money in a certain fiscal years.
Yes.
Good memory.
That's why it jumped. Any other questions? All right.
Thank you for the presentation.
Beautiful presentation and thank you for all your hard work.
Thank you.
And it is always awkward to have to approve a budget when you don't know what the.
It's a compliance issue.
We do appreciate the work and.
Every year?
Yep.
We ready for the motion?
I will. I'll move to adopt a resolution to approve the original 2023-2024 general fund budget and the original 2023-2024 special revenue fund budget dated July 1, 2023.
My second.
All right, Megan, any other questions? Megan, please conduct a roll call vote.
Trustee Raymond?
Yes.
Trustee Humphries?
Yes.
Trustee Ballinger?
Yes.
Trustee Bird?
Yes.
Trustee Moonmore?
Yes.
Trustee Newman-Bale?
Yes.
Trustee Pack?
Yes.
All right, motion carries. Moving on to the next discussion item, property offers. Deferring to Dr. Van Wagner, I mean, I can start it too.
Feel free.
I mean, we have, so late in the game, we have received a couple of firm property offers, both on this building and also on the birth of us on Shore Road as well. We're definitely not, I don't, I don't believe we're ready to really act or have a serious discussion on, on those offers. But I think it was important to put it on the agenda to state that we have received those. And obviously will be a subject for next board meeting as well. But if there's any initial questions or any details you want to add.
You know, I just, I do wonder with the birth of us, we, you know, we had previous conversations on that one. The other one is totally brand new in that element. We have negotiated, the board gave us authorization to do that and that's taken place. So I do, you know, in the faith of that, just wonder if the board has any flavor for something between now and then to discuss it. But at the same point, if the board doesn't and wants to take the time to do that, that's the board's, you know, purview as well to be able to do. I just want to put that out. Acme Township is obviously one of our taxpaying units and I just thought I'd throw that out there. But if the board feels they need the time, then that is totally fine.
I just had a clarifying question. I thought back in our original conversations, we had talked about hiring like a commercial real estate agent that would help to market the properties. Whatever happened with that?
So I've had some phone calls out there and trying to set something up, I haven't had a lot of success with trying to, you know, do that yet.
Okay.
And this kind of came, you know, unexpectedly, to be honest with you.
Right.
I was kind of waiting a little bit for our August meeting just to see where we end up with properties. So, you know, the, the hard part of this building is I really just don't want to get anybody that excited about it unless, until we have a plan of what we're going to do. Christine and I have had a lot of conversations about, we were really prepared at that meeting to really make a pretty solid recommendation to the board from a facility standpoint of what to do with printing, you know, and where our eventual goal and endpoint was. This one hit us just a little quicker, I think, out of the blue than we expected from that standpoint. And once we did that, the board's like, yep, let's get that action, that action. I was ready to say, okay, I'm gonna, now I'm gonna call again and go, okay, I really need to meet, you know, on this. So that, I really, I've kind of slow played it a little bit more, just waiting for that. I think there's been some consensus of thoughts of, you know, okay, where are you going? And what's the plan for administration? What's the plan for central office? And, you know, the, the beauty of that August meeting is finally the opportunity to sit down, talk, we've talked that, we've talked Glen Loomis, all those elements. And so it's really, I've slow played it a little bit, to be honest with you, waiting for that meeting. And then I didn't expect this.
Do you think at that August meeting, like we are gonna know about the property that, the properties that TCAPS owns, the infrastructure and like a today plan, a two-year plan, a five-year plan?
I think.
With our buildings and facilities? Because I feel like.
When we talked about facilities, you know, a year ago, the conversation, there were some, there was some interest in and some others, there was no interest. So for instance, the Potter and Four Mile property. There was no consent, the consensus from the board was, we're not interested, don't solicit it, don't do anything with that. The properties that were in the mix were birth of us and this building based on that conversation for us to begin. Glen Loomis is kind of a new now, now that Montessori has done that I think also is maybe we need some direction from the board. Do we, don't we? Or is that in the process and the mix of, you know, you know, just quite honestly, you know, does printing go to Saban? Do we end up at Saban or do we end up at Glen Loomis? Do we partially for a temporary spot end up in Saban to end up at Glen Loomis? That's where I think we're prepared to make a recommendation to the board. We were waiting for August to do that. I think we're willing to maybe speed that up a little bit based on this and, you know, and, you know, over the next few weeks here to give the board our thoughts on that. But that, that's really where it is. But the board really had of our other pieces of property, the discussion was, no, we really don't want you to put those on the market. We have no interest in taking offers. The policy, you might remember, was even changed. That unless the board, you know, says to put it on the market, that we don't just list it on our website as a potential for anybody to give us an unsolicited offer. I, you know, I won't even bring an unsolicited offer to the board, you know, on Potter and Four Mile, for instance, or Church Road or any of the other ones. But the ones the board said we have an interest in, that's the one the board authorized. That if you get it some offer, based on it being on the internet, you need to bring it to the board, John.
But I also felt, sorry to interrupt, but I also felt that Potter Road was such a low offer that it wasn't even worth entertaining at the time.
But we, but we, go ahead, Kristi.
And the restrictions on those properties make it such that it isn't really a viable option to sell for any kind of.
Small.
Decent offer unless it has something for the district to gain as far as opportunity.
Because of.
Because we have to share the proceeds with the state for those three vacant properties.
And I think more of the direction was just purely like we knew we had, we needed a facilities plan. And at the time, we, but we did understand and we still, I think, do that birth of us is vacant and we should be returning that to active duty in the community at some, somehow. And then the appraised value of this building was alleged to be relatively higher than what we, I think, necessarily even weren't sure. There was a lot of varied opinion on what.
Well, we had one that was done a few years ago of 600,000, I think.
Yeah, it's, it's varied. In another world, it was 3 million, right?
And I think my point was that if we get, if someone wants to pay 3 million and keep the building as is and renovate it, then that's something that the board would seriously consider. But if everything in between, I don't know where the line is, that we haven't discussed that as a board. But I think that's why.
We were obligated under the policy though to bring that offer because it was there to the board regardless of what it is.
So both of the offers in front of you today are directly related to the RFP. They were both a result of the RFP process. The Acme one was an original offer that was put forward where the board had asked John and I to meet with Acme Township to come up with a recommended purchase agreement, which is what we have in front of you today.
Yeah. And I think the two are separate law. I think this one, this building is a lot more confusing. We haven't, as a board, gone through the process of even deciding what that entails.
Right.
That I don't think there's much point to talking about it really today. I think we all need as board members to read that and come back.
And I think some board members kind of want that answer of what administration's recommendation is for.
Yeah.
If we're gonna vacate, where do we go? Where's the end goal? And, but we're prepared to put that together a little sooner than we were prepared to, I think, you know, in that aspect.
And I would even add, you know, you don't necessarily have to pick one recommendation. You could put together a couple of different scenarios for us to consider. I mean, I, I would love to see a master facilities plan developed first and that was, that's one of the strategic plan goals. But I know that was a medium to longer term, like year two, year three. We weren't expecting to finish that this first year. But it's so complicated, like others have said, you know, because of central grade and the possibility of moving those students temporarily to another building once Glen Loomis is vacated. And then where, where does central admin go, short-term, long-term? You know, there are just so many different.
Yeah.
Moving parts and scenarios that could occur. And we don't have cost estimates for the moves. Would it be one move, two moves, three moves of central office? We don't know what the operating costs are of this building. We don't know what renovations might need to be done in this building or Saban or Glen Loomis to accommodate the administrators. So I think if you all thought through a couple of different scenarios and gave us cost estimates, then we would be better informed to, you know, make an educated guess. And, and maybe we'd have a meeting of the minds with your recommendation, but just to have some scenarios.
And I think that's it. We've had quite a bit of talk. I think we're prepared, you know, with that. But the Acme Township properties is totally different.
Correct, and that.
There's been lots of conversation, there's been lots and, you know, you can't all know, you know, where that stands. And so we now have this purchase agreement that we have negotiated that we are obligated to bring forth to the board since it's been submitted now officially.
Yeah.
You want to say something about that?
No, go ahead.
Okay, I was gonna say about birth of us. So I, perhaps I'm very naive, but I thought that the offer that we got eight months ago for $800,000, I thought that was a firm offer. So I was surprised and honestly disappointed to see that the latest offer is $200,000 less. We haven't seen an explanation of that. So, I mean, is this just the nature of real estate now that?
This is the way that the negotiations came and this is what they presented.
Are, are they the place that's having to redo the sewer line as well? Or some another.
No, you're thinking about, you're thinking Blair, Blair Township.
Okay.
Well, East Township is as well, but Blair also is looking at some things out there.
So when Acme originally put forward a request answering the proposal that we put out, they had two scenarios in play. One was 800,000, one was 675. And they did put forward a letter of intent with a recommendation to purchase based on their idea of how they were going to use it. So they've been doing due diligence for the past, I would say, six months about the building and what needs to be done. So this is the ending point with the negotiation process.
And I think that's my biggest concern, to be honest, was when we presented the offer, there was obviously two things. There's also a whole list of things I know, which I know are non-legally binding, but at least a list of things that wanted, they wanted, or at least anticipated using the property for, which I think went largely into our opinion at the time of, it's great. This is why we want to do it, which is why I think, I do feel like we need the full month to give the board that time. I, I, this is just my personal opinion, as I feel like we do, because I don't think it's just the number that's changed. I think the concept may have changed.
The intended purpose has not changed.
So there's still everything that was on there with.
Correct.
With the daycare.
Yep, working with tattle, fire station. The intended purpose has not changed.
All their part, all the community partners are all the same, okay. Can you disclose what the adjustments or alterations to the building are? That, is that, was that part of the reason?
That hasn't been part of our conversation.
Okay, but they're saying that's why they're justifying the lower offer.
I mean, I'll tell you right now, it needs a new boiler, likely a new roof. I think they're looking at, their challenge is, just like with our board, they have community members that they answer to and their challenge is not having an appraisal that exceeds the amount that they're, they're paying a number that exceeds the appraisal amount. And so they're looking at how do they sell that to their community members?
How recent? And what price was the appraisal?
500,000.
How recent was that?
Very recent.
Okay.
And Christine, I don't, was the 600, the purchase agreement 600,000, was that all, all in one payment?
It's 400,000 upfront and the rest over five years.
So even that is changed from the, so that the 675 was over three years, right?
Yes, I think it was over five years, but we were looking at possibly condensing that.
And the appraisal was done by TCAPS?
Yep.
But at the time, I remember like there was other community members that, I mean, this has gone through a few rounds of people.
Commercial properties are very, very difficult to get appraisals on. I mean, we, we sold Old Mission at 1.1 million. That's a very different state property than current birth of us and what the needs are.
Yeah, I, I just think that, I mean, if it was a 600,000 dollar offer versus what we're looking for before, which was 675, like a bulk payment, then that would be different. But now we're kind of taking the worst, the multi-year option. And I just feel like the board needs to, too much has changed to rush a decision, is my personal opinion. But again, I am only one, so.
Well, with that, we still need to consider the opportunity cost too. You know, we're still paying utilities on the building, insurance on the building. And that has been happening since we originally did the RFP.
Definitely don't want to drag it out.
Didn't you say like annually, like a $40,000?
$40,000 for our trades to just maintain the building. That happens to be a steam boiler, so it takes a little bit more effort on our part to maintain it over the winter.
And is that offset at all by the rentals to TBays and others for using that gym?
No, it's barely used anymore.
Yeah, they really don't use it very much out there.
Quite a adjustment.
Well, and they're, they're wanting, they're asking to negotiate down for the roof repair as well.
From the 600,000 dollar price?
They're asking for the opportunity to.
I remember in the previous offer, it was 800,000 dollars versus the 675 lump sum. The 800 was paid over time versus the 675 lump sum. So the comparable numbers are 800 to 600, right? Or 675 to.
Well, I said, if we're going from 675 to 600, then that's one, that's a stark difference from 800 to 675, spreading it out with a negotiation to occur later to talk about a roof, which is why they lowered it from 800 to 600 in the first place. So I think there's a, like, I'm not necessarily opposed to any of it. I'm just saying that even, I do this all the time and I've read it and, and I've got more questions that I need to play out in my head that I would be a some no today. So like, not because I wouldn't come around, I just feel like it needs more time, especially for board members who don't do real estate every day. But again, I am okay with whatever the board decides. I'm not.
Well, here's a thought, could central admin go to birth of us temporarily? Just kidding.
What, what's the recommendation from admin? What's your recommendation?
I think, I, I give mine, feel free, but I think that, you know, it, it is, Acme Township is also our community, I think, is one thing. I think it goes to the right use, I think for sure, to repurpose the facility. I do think that it is just aging day by day, you know, the condition of it. We passed up an opportunity probably before that, you know, that I would hate for some reason to lose it again and not have it go to a purpose that suits TCAPs in the end pretty well and part of our taxpayers as well. So I, I think it's viable. Do I like, you know, the number and where it was? And did I like that number a lot better? Yes, I did. At the same point, you know, we're, we're spending even the staff time a lot, you know, and that has a value, like Christine said, from an opportunity cost standpoint, along with utilities, all those things. So it's, there is some point in, you know, and, and Erica, you could speak much better to this than me, but from a real estate standpoint of when offers are made and the expectation of how long before you accept that offer, I do wonder, you know, the timeline on that a little bit of what a standard would should be. But that's my personal opinion.
You get a little bit more leeway.
And again, not an expert on it, so can't speak to that, but.
Have, have we countered? Have we, have we taken their offer and actually countered where we would like to end up? And this is where we've ended up?
This is where we've ended up after all the conversation.
I just wanted to clarify.
Yeah, I mean.
The board could take it one step further.
The board, the board could certainly approve a different offer, like a different amount. That's one thing, one option as well. Well, there's still negotiations to be happened over stuff. That's my problem, too, is we're not, we're not a, and then I don't know, again, I haven't gone through that process of where they are in their approval. Do they have to have another meeting to approve it? Is that going to go back?
Oh, no.
And that's like some of the questions that I haven't had time to.
If there's anything else you have, please speak up.
They, they'll have to get it approved.
Yeah.
What?
They'll have to get it approved through their township commission.
Did they already get this approved?
Yeah, like the last one that we, they got approved, and then they came back to us, so we approved it, and then it went back. And then, so that's why it's just like, I don't feel that we're in a place that we, again, especially because there was, there's still negotiations over roofs and roof and other things. I just don't think that we're, we don't even have a final agreement to approve, I feel personally, but.
Any chance we could get Acme Township to come to our next finance meeting and give us a little presentation or Q and A with us about this?
You've talked.
Yeah, we can absolutely ask them to do that.
I don't think we're too far away. I just don't think we really have a deal on the hand either to approve. Like, I'm not going to approve six hundred, then they're going to come back and say we need to reduce, now it's five hundred, then we're going to have to approve that again, then they're going to go back to, like, the, I think.
Do you, do you have stipulations that we could go back with?
I mean, I think we've, we've approved at this point as a board for you to accept either of the previous two offers, which was eight hundred thousand or six seventy-five upfront. So I guess the, you know, the board could consider either modifying one of those, whether it would be the six. That's up to the board, I guess.
The only thing I would tell you is the board gave us authority to negotiate, and we went through, and there was negotiations. That process has happened on behalf of the board from administration. So that would be going back to renegotiate.
And you've landed at this number.
That is correct.
And your recommendation is to accept.
That is correct.
You know, I mean, there's another thing to think about, which is the building is literally sitting empty and it is an eyesore. And when we talked about Interlock, and one of the big things was giving the building back to the, like, instead of having this eyesore in the center of their community, I mean, that is in the center of Acme. You know, I mean, it's off a side road, but it is, you know, it is something.
I drive by it every day. I live on that road, and I am an Acme, I actually want this to go through. So just be clear, I, I want this for the community, too. So I drive by it every day and I, there's nothing more. I mean, I text, you know, grasses and cut, like, what's going on over there? Who's there? Like, every day.
Christine, do you think there's a possibility that this, that this would not be approved by their board?
I think this is all they can do. I, I don't think they can come up any higher.
And, but.
A lot of the, sorry.
I'm, I'm sorry, too. Do, do you think this number would go down?
Uh, I, we weren't going to accept anything lower than this to bring to the board, so it wouldn't go down from our standpoint. This was the minimum in which that we were comfortable bringing it forward to the board for approval.
So then if it did go down, we would walk away?
Well, you know, we would be obligated to come back to you and go, they didn't do it, you know, and, and then.
They, they have a purchase order, a four John two sign in front of you. It's final.
So their board has already approved this purchase.
They've approved the concept of it. They would have to go through as a, afterthought to approve it as a resolution.
And how long, so outside of Eastern Elementary being renovated, where the kids occupied Birth of Voss, how long has that building been sitting empty? Other than the backlor, um, backlor.
I think it closed in oh nine.
You're looking at me, none of us were there.
West Left. I, I think it closed prior to oh nine, maybe oh seven, oh eight. It's been sitting there empty a long time.
It was moved to the high school, the backlor.
Yes, yes.
International backlor.
Program, and so.
I believe it was closed at the school oh seven, oh eight, because we redistricted in oh nine and added to Quartade. So it's been empty a long time.
Yeah, so.
Are there any liabilities associated with this building? I mean, any debts, any?
Um, there's some minor bond debt, but that's not an issue. Legal counsel, they know what it is, and we're, we're clear and free to sell it.
So at that price of forty thousand a year, we've spent six hundred thousand maintaining it since it's been closed.
And I, just to be clear, I don't want to drag this out. I do want to get it resolved.
I mean, my opinion would be to accept the offer, in all honesty. Like, I can't, it's hard to justify forty thousand dollars just continually. And, and that's not improving the roof or the boiler or any of those things. That's just, I mean.
And I appreciate that. I, I just don't want to rush the board either, you know, from that aspect of.
I actually have a different, I, I can process real fast, so, but I, I've also told, you know, I've, I said out, when I added this to the agenda, I said I wasn't going to call a vote.
And I was thinking, just let them work on it during.
I would also, I would also, if we are going to approve it, at least ask that we, we, we approve it in more final, final terms than what they are. So I don't have any interest in negotiating over roof afterwards. So that would be, so it's basically like, strike out the other, hey, we're going to come back and talk about this, which means that we're going to try and do this again. If we want to talk about doing it quickly and getting this final for them and us, then I would say take out those, and then I would feel better about, that's really one of my biggest contentions in the whole thing. It's like, I don't think this is even a purchase agreement that we're actually there, like.
So have they done section eight, the inspection and tests, and have they done all of that?
They've done a lot. I don't know how much more they have to go, but they have been through the building quite extensively with a lot of different specialists.
And we know from our previous interested party, the same issues arose.
Yes.
I mean, they, they came to us with the same issues.
Yeah, I mean, I, if, you know, two hundred thousand dollars over five years is not worth two hundred thousand dollars today. So, I mean, I think if we're giving up on that front, you know, the time value of the money in five years, then, you know, I would agree with Scott. I don't think we're in a position, I mean, we, we've given up all of that. So why would we negotiate on any of the repairs that, that come up, that they've, that they've had their chance to put into this negoti, the purchase price?
So you could definitely make a motion to accept it with that item being struck from the agreement?
Which item was it? Could you just put that out?
Number, it's the last sentence of part three.
Part three, okay.
And, and I will tell you, I've received zero feedback from the community, like, from the beginning, kind of on, I shouldn't say that. I shouldn't say I haven't really had any negative feedback, you know, from the Acme Township original offer and when that was presented to the board in negotiation. I haven't had any feedback. At the same point, you know, I, we are kind of a bit springing this with the agenda. That's why I wondered about.
That's my.
Given a week even, you know, I'm bringing you guys back quick, you know, to just do, but just want to, for my transparency sake, want to put that out there, too.
Do you know what their intended use is for the building?
It's multipurpose, so they're looking at adding a fire station, which has been needed in the area for quite some time. They're looking on community spaces and community events, so they have support from Tattle to have an extension out there. They're looking at childcare, they're looking at after-school activities and events, senior center kind of activities for Acme Township residents, so it's multifaceted.
City offices, like the, or the township offices will be located there, right?
Yeah, and they don't have much now for infrastructure.
Oh, no, they really don't.
You know, of Acme.
No, you can, you can approve the superintendent to sign without that, and they wouldn't have to come back.
Yeah. I'll, I'll just ask one last question of our, one of our Realtors on the board. Do you, in your professional opinion, do you think it would behoove us to get a commercial Realtor for this property to, we might, would we possibly entertain a higher offer in the next two to three years?
I mean, it's been sitting vacant since two thousand and nine. I would have, you would have thought, it's not like Boardman, we're occupied, we're here. I mean, I, you're here, I'm not here, but the, the offices are here. You would think that if there was an investor that was interested in it, they would have, they would have come to TCAPs with a proposal. I think this building's very different. We've had different appraisals on it, different values and appraisals considerable, it's considerable, you know, considerably different. And, you know, admin is occupied here in our printing department. So a little bit different situation where I think a commercial Realtor, especially with the growth within downtown Traverse City, would behoove TCAPs to hire a commercial Realtor here. I don't think, I don't think Birth of Voss, yeah.
Okay.
Christine, it's, it's not, it's not continuous to the Kmart and Toms, right? There's a church between, right?
Yeah, yep. It's in a small little subdivision right next to a church and some houses.
Yeah, I was just, I know, I mean, they're redeveloping the Kmart.
Yeah, no, there's separation there, and it's ten acres, seven acres?
Seven to eight, I think.
You can build a maximum of fourteen houses on that property or something, yeah.
It'd be tight, but yeah.
Yeah.
Right.
So, yeah, I mean, I'm really okay with whatever you guys decide to. I mean, I would probably vote no as is. But that's okay. I'm okay to be outvoted. I, it's not something that bothers me. I would probably vote yes if, if we could strike that. Deal or make it clear that we're not really willing to negotiate the price anymore.
Are we not able to strike that?
No, we can, yeah. We, we would actually approve the contract, we would approve the superintendent to sign a contract that would be like that without this. Right?
Do you think if we struck that, what do you, how do you think the response would be?
I, I think we'll be able to get it through.
Yeah.
I think we'd like to try.
Any kind of negotiation on cost for the roof?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So we would be authorizing the superintendent to approve, to approve a sale price of six hundred thousand, of which.
I, I would motion to approve the sale of this property with the as-is condition. I think that makes good sense, and I'm not interested in having anybody else negotiate it but you guys.
Yep.
Yeah, for sure.
Was that a full motion, Holly?
Sort of. I mean, take the motion.
Okay.
I do have possibly a motion for you. I did have him write one out, if you would like.
I would.
Well, but the change.
Yeah.
Just got to change and add that section about striking that component.
And Dr. Van Wagenen, just for his, for context, too, we had another offer prior to Acme Township last year that, if I recall correctly, was for five hundred thousand dollars.
No.
Seven hundred, more, seven hundred.
The first one you got?
But then it was, and it wasn't, it wasn't accepted because the board had not even had conversation if they were interested in selling the property at that point, and then it was withdrawn.
And that party is no longer interested?
Correct, and we have investigated and talked that Erica has to abstain from that conversation due to conflicts of interest.
Yeah.
But that, that, they, they definitely are no longer interested and have moved into another direction.
And we've paid another forty thousand dollars.
Yeah.
At least.
So I move that the Board of Education authorize the superintendent or designate to enter into purchase negotiations or sale of Acme Township for the sale of Birth of Voss, excluding the last paragraph, or the last sentence in paragraph three of the purchase agreement.
Second.
All right. Any other questions? You feel, that's, gives you that motion, you happy with that?
Are you comfortable?
Are you happy you have a good enough motion to approve and sign the purchase agreement without?
I understand the provisions of the board, so we're getting six hundred thousand.
Okay. I just meant to actually physically sign it, like, as well.
Yeah, everything's there enough for.
We don't need, we don't need to explicitly state that sentence.
That, with that there, we have a written proof of that as identified. We're good.
All right. Megan, please conduct a roll call vote.
Trustee Byrd?
Yes.
Trustee Moonmore?
Yes.
Trustee Ballinger?
Yes.
Trustee Humphries?
Yes.
Trustee Newman-Bale?
Yes.
Trustee Pack?
Yes.
Trustee Raymond?
Yes.
All right, motion carries.
So what about the other offer?
Um, on that, go ahead.
Can I provide some background? I've been working with the developers for a little bit. So I've been working with developers since I've been in this position since two thousand and fifteen, and there's been a lot of challenge as it relates to tax advantages, whether or not you would renovate the building and what can be done on the little over one acre parcel. So it's currently R2. City Commission did just make some changes as it relates to zoning that would allow them to provide multiple units on one point one acres. There was heavy conversation as it relates to housing, increasing the supply, the supply within the region and focusing on workforce housing, the missing middle, et cetera. So they definitely heard the desire of the board to provide units that would be affordable to employees working for the district, and they've laid that out in here. In order to do such, I've learned quite a bit more about development and some of the tax advantages and some of the investments, the protocols that need to be put in place to actually make the investment work. A lot of the money that is available is very heavily regulated for developers to be able to do workforce housing. And to be able to make it work so that there's housing, they have tiered their system, so they have lower-end units all the way up to upper-end units to be able to subsidize the lower-end units. So that's what they put in place. Parking was included in this, as there has been parking issues throughout downtown, not having any parking identified, I, I did bring up as an issue, which they've added to it. So they're putting forth the effort to look at the goal from the board's perspective of increasing availability of the missing middle or workforce housing options within downtown walkability to some of our schools and the local area. So that's what they've put forward.
And I'm very receptive to, oh, I just wanted, I just don't think, it's such a loaded, such more of a loaded, and I feel like even with Birth of Voss, we played out so much that we don't have to again, but.
Yeah, I, I think we have some time on this one. The, the city, the full city commission has not approved those zoning changes yet. So, I mean, that could still take several months. I think the planning commission just approved the changes at their meeting last week to go to the full city commission, so. I mean.
I think we should still, I think we should still move, move, you know, time is, move with haste, but I, at the same time, is just making sure that we do what we can to get through those hoops.
Yeah. One of the conversations I, sorry, I keep doing that, I'm sorry.
We, we need to know your recommendations for, once this building sells, where we're going.
So one of the conversations I had with these two developers was about timing. They would be open to an extension of up to one year to allow us the opportunity to move. We have opportunities within Glen Loomis. What I would normally say for office spaces, it's, it's pretty easy to move office spaces. The print shop is the one that I worry about. I believe the print shop's long-term resting place, if you will, will be Saban. I think that we can do that within the cafeteria. Evan and I have had some extensive conversations about that. We may be able to get to a spot where we move printing to its final spot at Saban, whether the, the board is open to using the money from Birth of Voss or looking at what's left in our bond to do that. We would have up to a year to relocate them, and we do have options within existing buildings within Glen Loomis for office spaces. What the final spot is, I think it's debatable Saban or Glen Loomis, once we're done using Glen Loomis for Central Grade's transition. We do also have Oak Park that at least expires in twenty twenty-five.
Can we extend that again?
We extended it to twenty-five.
I think, and, and I appreciate the offer, absolutely. I mean, you know, as we start to think about our infrastructure and the plan. about our infrastructure and the plans for the TCAPs buildings, I think one thing within the city that's been a little bit frustrating, especially as a Realtor, is that developers are proposing this abundant housing concept of building affordable housing and what has continued to happen over and over and over again, as it get, they get rezoned for density, high density, and then they're selling very, very expensive condos. That is not affordable housing. We've seen a couple large apartment developments actually then be resold where then the structures that were put in place for affordable housing are kind of left to the wayside, and then new developer comes in and turns them into condominiums. So that's a little bit fearful of, you know, just what the proposal is and, and really how do we make sure that, you know, housing is kept affordable for, you know, and I don't know ultimately if that needs to be a TCAPs decision, but just something to kind of think about as, you know, we start, you know, have these conversations with this building. I personally think we should hire a commercial real estate agent on this building and market it. I think that this building, you know, not only has a very historical factor, but, you know, could be repurposed or, you know, to whatever, and I think it would appeal to a lot of developers because of the proximity to downtown and, and just...
We'll tell you, you know, part of our housing project we've been working on with IFF, you know, and their assessments in that element, their, their conversation has been, there's no ability from a, a financial standpoint where they have found a way to make it work with the existing building. They found a way to make it work with new construction in the lot, but they cannot, there's just not enough density. They figure there's about fifteen to sixteen units is what this could be turned into, and with the abatement, the, you know, all of it to be done, there's just not the dollars there in their mind that anybody would put anything more, you know, than, than this into it from that standpoint. It's basically worth the property. You know, that's what they really said, but...
That's, yeah, that's what I've heard from every developer I've met with since 2015.
Which is hard, because there's folks in the neighborhood that want to see that, you know, so I think, you know, that's where, you know, I, I'd be interested in if there is anybody to give the board a true professional opinion on that, but, I mean, that, we're seeing that over and over and over. Remember, the RFPs we saw were very low of the hundred, two hundred thousand dollar, you know, number. This one was, we thought, you know, was large, but in talking with them, they're just like, that's the only way that's possible, and like, that's the number. And like I said, my, my ventures with IFF and that conversation, we did put that into the RFQ that we've got for working on a housing project for educators. This building is in that, and that's the feedback. Those RFQs are not due for another couple of weeks, but that's the feedback we're getting.
I don't think I knew that, well, thank you.
It, it's, it's so new. I mean, like I said, we don't even have responses yet from that RFQ. You know, from all of our standpoints, the Blair property is very appealing for what we're looking to do. And we think we will have some responses to that for the Blair property.
Yeah.
But, you know, they've met with Blair Township, they're very excited about it, I mean, lots of things, and that's a whole nother kind of thing that we'll get to, but that's a piece that, you know, falls into this that... It's hard, because like I said, I do know we've had some members of the neighborhood, and they're like, we really would like to see the building restored in that element. It's just at some point, we'll just sit on it and sit on it, sit on it, and it's just... What's a little scary for us is the infrastructure is going to need to be addressed and probably addressed soon. The boiler is on its absolute last leg. I mean, heating and, you know, the heating of this building is like...
We know.
You're, you're, you know.
No issues today.
And so, you know, are you now going to get to the point where we have to put two hundred, three hundred thousand dollars into a building that we know we can't get it back out of? You know, so again, kind of that cost.
Got a little space heater under her.
They're everywhere. We're, we're blowing fuses on a weekly basis.
So...
If you read the proposal, the, um, one of the investors' brothers, a teacher at Blair...
Yep.
Yeah, I saw that. And so, I mean, they're, and these units are going to be for sale. So it's not like somebody can come in and just flip the property and...
But, and, and I think that we would need, you know, if the board wanted at any point to entertain this, I mean, we would need to bring professional, you know, I think we bring probably Gordon Van Wieren from Trunan, who's a real estate expert at schools, and we talk about maybe deed restrictions or those kind of things to address, you know, so there's definitely some legwork to do that hundred percent, you know, no, but it's a tough one. I mean, this really, this building really is a tough one with the neighborhood, and I think you're going to need to listen to that. I think, you know, overall, sit and look at the whole deal, but I think to Josie's point, we've talked a lot about, I do think we need to resolve, and now resolve soon, finally, a recommendation of where we're headed. And, and I, and, and I would like to, in the next thirty days, provide the board with that in writing of what my recommendation is. For print shop, for eventual, you know, endpoint for us. And, and, and it may have an A and B option under Josie's point, we'll see, but I'm prepared with this offer, if the board would entertain us to get you that, and then for you to, you know, possibly next month to bait it some more, I think would be fair.
Do you think this would... Ask them to come in?
I was going to say, do you think this would suffice for like a special meeting where we just focus on like our infrastructure?
I do.
I do too. I mean, I feel like we've been asking for this for a really, really long time.
And like I said, just, I was trying to kick it to that August, you know, and, and, and I'm kind of starting to now feel like we're going to have so much in that August that...
Exactly.
Yeah, that was supposed to be for pre-bond planning.
Right, which was kind of that, you know, but at the same point, don't want to, you know, timing-wise, we've asked a lot about all you folks over the last month, but do I think that? I do, actually.
Okay.
And maybe we bring the developer and we bring Gordon Van Wieren from Trunan, sit and hash some of those elements out to figure out with that recommendation and really, I think we would love some, you know, some, some direction from you guys on where to move forward with print shop, the funding for it, and where we eventually end up. I think, I think we're at that point.
And I also think maybe before that meeting, get a commercial Realtor to do an analysis on the property, a CMA. I know, I know it's a hard building to comp, but there's all kinds of ways that they can look at that.
And comps, I mean, we got the evaluation, I mean, we've got that, but, and like I said, but when it came in, I think we both looked at each other, and we're like, yeah, especially when the last one was six hundred thousand. We knew what we were going through the other ones, but now having put it in the RFP and RFQ process and conversation after conversation with developers that do this, we just, we know we're at a point where the valuation that was done, there's just no way. You know, there, there is this question that's kind of a bit of feeling, but, you know, I, if, if that's, I... Talking with a couple of the folks, you know, I haven't wanted to commit to a specific commercial real estate agent. I think that, you know, they, they're like, okay, yeah, sign, let me sign, and then I'll list it. I don't know about that kind of pro bono service in the middle of the comps of what it's worth unless you're, they feel you're really serious about wanting to put it up.
I, I think, I think in this case, we would approve a budgetary number to pay, which is untypical.
Okay, that's helpful for me.
I, because to that point, like, we would actually, I would prefer to actually pay for the service of providing that report, whereas typically it's provided free because they want the listing. So like, in this case, I don't think we can say that we're going to give the listing, to your point.
Yeah.
Is John saying he's running in tissues because they want to know if we're really going to list it?
That's why I've slow-played a little bit till I just, the board, we were there, you know, with, we're in kind of resolving these things, but, I mean, Erica, do you think that's a possibility? I mean, if somebody just, you know, perfe, or do you think we'll find somebody to do a pro bono, I mean...
Well, and I guess, I mean, to back up, because I just, if I heard you say the developers are saying a million dollars, can't slice it any other way.
It, yeah, I mean, the two, the two respondents to the original RFP were so low because a lot of their plan was continuing on getting state money to be, to be able to afford the project. And so that, that's risk for them. If they propose a higher purchase price, it's all risk if they don't get those grant funds or those tax advantages.
But don't you think your, people that want to buy the building are going to come in with that mentality and attitude? I, I would think that if you're an out, I, I, I don't know, I guess that would be my only kind of challenge would be, of course, if you want to buy the building for a development and make a whole bunch of money in the end, you're going to come in with the whole plan that this is your maximum price. Versus, you know, I mean, could you, yeah, I mean, I guess...
The closest thing we have to comp is with the box that was done next door, and that sold renovated. And now, and it's been a while, but in that million, little over a million, you know, one point one is what it sold.
No, that was over two million.
Overall?
Yeah, I think like two point three.
Renovated, completely done, all that, you know, compared to this. So, like I say, to sit and go, okay, this is three, as it sits, you know, I mean, so that, to me, that's really the most close comp, you know, that's kind of sitting there that we've kind of, you know, explored just talking a little bit about.
Yeah, I would think, come back to your question, to me, I would think a commercial, I think if you went to three different commercial agents and said, hey, listen, this is, you know, tell me what you think, what would you recommend, what would you do? I think you could get three different opinions and then maybe decide from there.
I just don't know if they're going to do that pro bono without, with getting excited and saying, okay, I'm willing to do that, but are you willing to list it with me? Or, but if I go to them and go, what would you charge us to give us that? You know, that's something I could maybe go to...
I do it, I do it all the time.
I'm willing to go to a couple of brokers and at least have that conversation and see what they tell me.
Yeah.
I think that's what you said.
Yeah, I, I do too.
Based on what Scott's saying. And maybe they might go, no problem, we'll help you out, or they might go, eh, pay us ten grand, yeah.
I think what we're running into, though, which I've done plenty of developments and many that have failed and never come to light is because there's so many moving pieces. You've got federal funds, you've got like pilots, you're going to have zoning, like, and a lot of times, it's like, well, like, this building right now may not be, we may not be required to do anything because we're a school district and a government entity, but as soon as we sell it to a private entity, then we, then we, they have to do certain stuff. So like, there's just, even I run through this project and I'm like, oof, that's a lot, like, and it's not as complicated. So it really, I think that's why when you go to say someone pro bono, it's not like, what's it worth? It's so many different, like, what are all the issues that you're going to run into?
So, so why don't we do this, to kind of move this along? I think I will work in, in with Megan on trying to figure us out a special meeting time. In the meantime, I will, uh, soon, get with a couple of brokers to see where they stand on trying to give us a, a comps number, if you will, and then, and then possibly having the, the offered developer come in and, and present as well as some opinions from, from legal counsel on how, if we wanted to put some stipulations and try and what we have a legal authority to do to avoid what some of these things that have been brought up of other buildings do, and then just kind of see where we are from there. Does that make sense?
I think so.
Is TC Housing Authority, are they somebody who could also advise on deed restrictions and things like that?
Not, not much because of, you know, of the school property, I mean, it...
Too specialized, okay.
It's probably going to be real estate, you know, legal, you know, from that standpoint.
Okay. Okay, so what's the timing of this meeting versus our getting cost estimates with scenarios?
I think we'll probably bring that now at the same time, it would be my goal.
Okay.
And give that, and give a recommendation as far as where we move.
A lot of the cost estimates are being developed already as part of pre-bond planning, so we'll have some...
I, I will, we will have that together for you at the same time and for you guys to just have it all up there.
Okay.
So long story, we have a lot to figure out in the next month, but we'll just come back in next month and see if we're ready to talk about it.
Nobody going on vacation.
What I think you're saying is some point, you know, here, you know, right after the fourth, maybe somewhere real close, or maybe that week before the board meeting or something right there. I'll have Megan work on it.
So it wouldn't necessarily come through finance, it would just be a special meeting?
I think that's the way we're going to have to roll with this one. Normally, we would, but based on all this, I think it needs to have the weight of the whole.
It's about the same time.
We're going to have the same conversation at both places, so...
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay. Okay.
Sounds good.
All right. And now on to head lice, so...
Student discipline first.
I heard that.
I, it doesn't, that one's, that one's a little bit more serious than the other one, so I, uh... Moving on to a discussion, item G, Board Policy Second Reading, being through committee.
H now, right?
No, I moved H.
G.
So there's a number of policies that have gone through committee in first reading and are now ready for adoption. Is there any discussion? Do I have a motion?
I move that the Board of Education adopt the following new policies as presented. Board Policy 5600 Student Discipline. Board Policy 5600.01 Student Discipline Due Process. Board Policy 60, 5600.02 Student Discipline Students with Disabilities. Board Policy 5600.03 Student Discipline reinstatement following expulsion. Board Policy 5600.04 Student Discipline Enrollment Following Misconduct in another public or non-public, non-public school. Board Policy 5600.05 Student Discipline Suspension from Class Subject or Activity by Teacher. And Board Policy 8451 Head Lice. Pediculosis.
You got it.
Head lice.
My second.
All right, any other questions? Megan, please conduct a roll call vote.
Trustee Humphries?
Yes.
Trustee Byrd?
Yes.
Trustee Ballinger?
Yes.
Trustee Moonmore?
Yes.
Trustee Newman-Bale?
Yes.
Trustee Pack?
Yes.
All right.
Trustee Raymond?
Yes.
I keep doing that, sorry. Motion carries.
Pediculosis.
What's that?
Pediculosis, everyone.
Do that time real fast, you don't...
Said it in the wrong order, you've got to repeat the whole motion.
Now know why no one else jumped on that one.
Yeah, exactly. We do have a hefty close the session agenda, but as usual, we have our second public comment in front of that. So is there any public comment?
There is no public comment.
All right. Moving on to the closed session agenda. Do I have a motion for the board to go into closed session?
I move that the Board of Education go into closed session for the purpose of strategy connected with the negotiation of multiple collective bargaining agreements as allowed by the Opening Meetings Act, PA 267 of 1976, Section 8, 1C.
My second.
All right, Megan, please conduct a roll call vote.
Trustee Raymond?
Yes.
Trustee Ballinger?
Yes.
Trustee Byrd?
Yes.
Trustee Humphries?
Yes.
Trustee Moonmore?
Yes.
Trustee Newman-Bale?
Yes.
Trustee Pack?
Yes.
All right, motion carries. We are now in closed session. We return to this room after the closed session. We return to this room after the closed session.
My name is Fred Cook and I drive school bus.
My name is Leanne Mergey and I'm a school bus driver for TCAPs. It's been a very wonderful experience.
When I first hired in, one of the previous bus drivers told me that this particular job, driving a school bus, is the best job on earth. So I immediately took to it. Uh, and, uh, I have to agree that this is one of the best jobs that anyone can do.
What prompted me in the very beginning, I have a college degree. And she said, you're in the safest vehicle in the world on the road. So I thought, well, you know, I'm gonna try. It's a, cause I would be on the same time schedule as my own children. And when they were off, I was off. When holidays, I was, you know, I was there. So it was the best of both worlds. TCAPs offers jobs with elsewhere within the, the system.
Between routes, I used to, for twelve, thirteen years, I did lunch duty over at East Middle School and now I paint.
They're real good about finding people the hours that they need during the course of the day to make the job great. We have Mesa Insurance, the whole district has it. It's awesome. It's the best health insurance. We offer a 401K. There's a sign on bonus. It's a win-win situation.
The most important thing, I think, coming to work at TCAPs is you understand, is, you understand that you are part of a team. It's a part of a collective, you know? It's not just bus drivers and then versus teachers. It's not that. We all are in, in this thing called, uh, education together.
If a person likes kids, generally likes kids, um, this is a perfect job.
So I'm talking to kids all day. Uh, and that experience, uh, is really heartwarming and, uh, well, I continue to understand how, what it means to, uh, be a part of the community.
You are an educator. You have a chance to touch children's lives every day. And don't, don't think that you don't. You are such an important part of the wheel of education.
My name is Fred Cook and I drive school bus.
My name is Leanne Mergey and I'm a school bus driver for TCAPs. It's been a very wonderful experience.
When I first hired in, one of the previous bus drivers told me that this particular job, driving a school bus, is the best job on earth. So I immediately took to it. Uh, and, uh, I have to agree that this is one of the best jobs that anyone can do.
What prompted me in the very beginning, I have a college degree.
that anyone can do.
What prompted me in the very beginning, I have a college degree, and she said, "You're in the safest vehicle in the world on the road." So I thought, "Well, you know, I'm gonna try." Because I would be on the same time schedule as my own children. And when they were off, I was off. When holidays, I was, you know, I was there. So it was the best of both worlds. TCAPS offers jobs with elsewhere within the system.
Between routes, I used to, for 12, 13 years, I did lunch duty over at East Middle School and now I paint.
They're real good about finding people the hours that they need during the course of the day to make the job great. We have Mesa Insurance, the whole district has it. It's awesome. It's the best health insurance. We offer a 401K. There's a sign-on bonus. It's a win-win situation.
The most important thing, I think, coming to work at TCAPS is you understand is you understand that you are part of a team. It's a part of a collective, you know? It's not just bus drivers and then versus teachers. It's not that. We all are in this thing called education together.
If a person likes kids, generally likes kids, this is a perfect job.
I'm talking to kids all day and that experience is really heartwarming and I continue to understand what it means to be a part of the community.
You are an educator. You have a chance to touch children's lives every day. And don't, don't think that you don't. You are such an important part of the wheel of education.
My name is Fred Cook and I drive school bus.
My name is LeAnn Murchy and I'm a school bus driver for TCAPS. It's been a very wonderful experience.
When I first hired in, one of the previous bus drivers told me that this particular job, driving a school bus, is the best job on earth. So I immediately took to it and I have to agree that this is one of the best jobs that anyone can do.
What prompted me in the very beginning, I have a college degree, and she said, "You're in the safest vehicle in the world on the road." So I thought, "Well, you know, I'm gonna try." Because I would be on the same time schedule as my own children. And when they were off, I was off. When holidays, I was, you know, I was there. So it was the best of both worlds. TCAPS offers jobs with elsewhere within the system.
Between routes, I used to, for 12, 13 years, I did lunch duty over at East Middle School and now I paint.
They're real good about finding people the hours that they need during the course of the day to make the job great. We have Mesa Insurance, the whole district has it. It's awesome. It's the best health insurance. We offer a 401K. There's a sign-on bonus. It's a win-win situation.
The most important thing, I think, coming to work at TCAPS is you understand is you understand that you are part of a team. It's a part of a collective, you know? It's not just bus drivers and then versus teachers. It's not that. We all are in this thing called education together.
If a person likes kids, generally likes kids, this is a perfect job.
I'm talking to kids all day and that experience is really heartwarming and I continue to understand what it means to be a part of the community.
You are an educator. You have a chance to touch children's lives every day. And don't, don't think that you don't. You are such an important part of the wheel of education.
If there's no objection, we return to open session. We're now in open session. Moving on to the next discussion item, 14A. Is there any discussion? Hold to phone to Dr. Mwanku. I guess if you had anything to add as well.
No, so again, we are presenting to you the contract extensions. They have been voted on by all of the groups and so you've been provided with that information. And again, these have been discussed with all the employee groups and our administrative team have worked with them and I think did a great job and want to commend Christine and Connie on their work, working with all of our employee groups and all the employee leaders for their work. I think, you know, it's been a big commitment on their part and we're thankful for all of our employees and so we're excited and happy to present this to the board.
Any, any other discussion or questions? Just for new members, we have to do each one individually, so this is a little of a process, but with that, is there a motion?
Ratify the contract extensions for the Traverse City Education Association, TCEA, as presented.
I second.
Megan, please conduct a roll call vote.
Trustee Ballinger?
Yes.
Trustee Pack?
Yes.
Trustee Byrd?
Yes.
Trustee Humphries?
Yes.
Trustee Moonmore?
Yes.
Trustee Newman-Bale?
Yes.
Trustee Raymond?
Yes.
Motion carries. Moving on to next discussion item, ratification of contract for Traverse City Administrators Association.
I move that the Board of Education ratify the contract extensions for the Traverse City Administrators Association, TCAA, as presented.
I second.
All right. Any other questions? Megan, please conduct a roll call vote.
Trustee Humphries?
Yes.
Trustee Byrd?
Yes.
Trustee Ballinger?
Yes.
Trustee Moonmore?
Yes.
Trustee Newman-Bale?
Yes.
Trustee Pack?
Yes.
Trustee Raymond?
Yes.
All right, motion carries. Moving on to the next discussion item, ratification of contract extension for the American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees. Any discussion or motion?
I move that the Board of Education ratify the contract extensions for the American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees, AFSCME, as presented.
I second.
For Noy. Megan, is there any other discussion? Megan, please conduct a roll call vote.
Trustee Raymond?
Yes.
Trustee Humphries?
Yes.
Trustee Ballinger?
Yes.
Trustee Byrd?
Yes.
Trustee Moonmore?
Yes.
Trustee Newman-Bale?
Yes.
Trustee Pack?
Yes.
Motion carries. Now, moving on to the next question item, item D, ratification of contract extensions for the Food Service Employee Association. Any discussion or motion?
I move that the Board of Education ratify the contract extensions for the Food Service Employee Association, FSEA, as presented.
I second.
All right. And then, is there any other questions? Megan, please conduct a roll call vote.
Trustee Moonmore?
Yes.
Trustee Byrd?
Yes.
Trustee Ballinger?
Yes.
Trustee Humphries?
Yes.
Trustee Newman-Bale?
Yes.
Trustee Pack?
Yes.
Trustee Raymond?
Yes.
All right, motion carries. Moving on to the next question item, item E, ratification of contract extensions for the Traverse City Clerical Assistance, Paraprofessionals, and Secretaries Association. Any discussion or motion?
I move that the Board of Education ratify the contract extensions for the Traverse City Clerical Assistance, Paraprofessionals, and Secretaries Association, TCCAPSA, as presented.
I second.
I think Andrew. This is a tight one. All right, any other discussion? Megan, please conduct a roll call vote.
Trustee Humphries?
Yes.
Trustee Raymond?
Yes.
Trustee Ballinger?
Yes.
Trustee Byrd?
Yes.
Trustee Moonmore?
Yes.
Trustee Newman-Bale?
Yes.
Trustee Pack?
Yes.
All right, motion carries. Moving on to item F, ratification of contract extensions to the Traverse City Transportation Association. Any discussion?
I move that the Board of Education ratify the contract extensions for the Traverse City Transportation Association, the TCTA, as presented.
I second.
All right. Any other discussion? Megan, please conduct a roll call vote.
Trustee Moonmore?
Yes.
Trustee Ballinger?
Yes.
Trustee Byrd?
Yes.
Trustee Humphries?
Yes.
Trustee Newman-Bale?
Yes.
Trustee Pack?
Yes.
Trustee Raymond?
Yes.
All right, motion carries. Moving on to the next question item, item G, ratification of contract extensions for non-affiliated administrative and non-affiliated support staff. Any discussion or motion?
I move that the Board of Education ratify the contract extensions for the non-affiliated administrative and non-affiliated support staff, as presented.
I second.
Erica. Megan, please conduct a roll call vote.
Trustee Humphries?
Yes.
Trustee Moonmore?
Yes.
Trustee Ballinger?
Yes.
Trustee Byrd?
Yes.
Trustee Newman-Bale?
Yes.
Trustee Pack?
Yes.
Trustee Raymond?
Yes.
All right, motion carries. Moving on to ratification of contract extensions for the executive team, item H. Is there any discussion or motion?
I move that the Board of Education ratify the contract extensions for the executive team, as presented. I second.
All right, that's for Noy. Can we, any other discussion? Megan, please conduct a roll call vote.
Trustee Byrd?
Yes.
Trustee Humphries?
Yes.
Trustee Ballinger?
Yes.
Trustee Moonmore?
Yes.
Trustee Newman-Bale?
Yes.
Trustee Pack?
Yes.
Trustee Raymond?
Yes.
All right, motion carries. All right, and that concludes that. We are now on to item 15, another closed session. Do I have a motion for the board to go into closed session?
I move that the Board of Education go into closed session under section 81H of the Michigan Open Meetings Act, MCL 15.2681H, to consider privileged written attorney-client communication, attorney-communication dated June 9, 2023, as allowed by section 81H of the Open Meetings Act.
I second.
All right, Megan, please conduct a roll call vote.
Trustee Raymond?
Yes.
Trustee Ballinger?
Yes.
Trustee Byrd?
Yes.
Trustee Humphries?
Yes.
Trustee Moonmore?
Yes.
Trustee Newman-Bale?
Yes.
Trustee Pack?
Yes.
All right, we're now in closed session. We'll return when it's after that.